All right, everybody. The October 2nd, 2024 special meeting of the Malibu City Council is now called to order. May we please have the roll call?
Councilmember Grisanti.
Here.
Councilmember Riggs.
Here.
Councilmember Silverstein.
I'm here.
Mayor Pro Tim Stewart.
Here.
Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Ex-Mayor.
Mayor.
Oh, look, I am here.
Very nice.
Did you show your C S R?
You have a coro with all councilors present.
Most of the people are reporting, yes. By the way, just so everybody speak up, we're being recorded. To be helpful, if you can hear, make sure you're speaking well. All right, and we please have a, oh, we have a question, please. All right. Um, you're on.
All right, sounds good. Ready to begin.
United States to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we please have a report on the posted of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on September 27th, 2024.
All right, now we have approval of the agenda.
We approve the agenda.
We second the agenda.
Got a motion in the second? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The proposal proposed, we've enough, it's passed. All right, I want to take public comments on the agenda item. This public comment period has closed, so if you don't vote for the public participation. Do we have any speaker slips?
Um, no, we don't have any speaker slips.
And no one's online, say?
There is no hybrid consumer participation for this meeting, so no one.
Okay, so do, uh, this is item, is strategic proposed schedule, uh, due to this in the year 2024? Who are you presenting?
Yes, Mayor, uh, Sir, Honorable Members of the City Council. Uh, I will kick us off, and then our staff from each department will be commenting on some fees. I want to give you a brief overview. At the last council meeting beginning September, we brought the draft final schedule of fees for your review to give us some feedback in the direction of doing a workshop, so we could have more discussion, consider fees, and look at areas to potentially subsidize. There was also direction for staff to take a look at or identify fees where we felt we've gotten a lot of feedback over the years that those fees really should be called out and looked at. In those discussions, we found that there hasn't really been one individual fee that our applicants or the public call out specifically. It's really more in total, um, when they're looking at their project, uh, listening to me. So what we did was we tried to provide some scenarios of, um, of fake case studies, if you will, so that you could see what a scenario of a typical project might be in their cost and get a better perspective of what the fees are, and that might help with the context and where to drill down. We did also hear about the dark sky related fees, so we also called that out as a scenario. And then there is an item from the summer of 2023 where we got direction on AB 2160 to look at maybe any fees where there might be, uh, a desire to avoid or bypass the city permit process for the appeal of a major public works project that is currently being drafted and the resolution should return from our city attorney. And then a couple data correction items. One, that we, that we're doing this analysis, here we observe, and this doesn't impact the fees or the draft cost of fees, the recommendation, but on page 38 of the report from our consultant, I'm adding to the data, you know, some of the numbers in the Excel have been transposed. We'll get into that later in this presentation. So some of the numbers on where our losses are in planning are slightly less in a good way. It's because some of these numbers got transposed, but that has no impact on the draft schedule. Just want to touch on that portion of it. And then as we were trying to finalize this presentation this morning, we were working very quickly, we did notice that we had a section on the dark sky fees that are updated from what we needed out, and so it's corrected here, where it also has it, but we'll comment on that when we get to it. And then I'd also really like to thank the team.
Yeah.
After our last council meeting, the direction was to really focus on the development services related fees, the planning, environmental sustainability fees, of course. Uh, we want to thank all of our departments and staff, but, uh, the environmental sustainability and planning teams really put a lot of effort into this and focused on it. So I'd like to thank Samisha, Julie Bauer, Tyler Eaton, Andrea Ketchum.
Keta John.
Tracy Rosine, Patricia Salazar, and especially Isabel, uh, for all their hard work on this. Oh, Randy, Ayala, anyone else I forgot?
Um, Marine.
And Marine, thank you. But of course, our teams, I want to call up the individual staff for all of the work you guys did. They've spent a lot of time on this, and we want to try to put together as best of the presentations possible, so be remiss of that information. Now we're going to hand it over to the team to try to drill down on some scenarios. If you want us to take the, the home first.
Okay.
Hand it over to you, though.
Good afternoon, Council, uh, City Manager, Assistant City Manager. Before you, we're going to be presenting you a few case studies to show you a window into our development process fee. We have selected three different, uh, realistic scenarios of, uh, development, and so we will start with the over the counter reviews. The project type before you are, this is our first case study. It is a project, uh, over the counter, level two project. Basically, an interior remodel of an existing master bed, a bathroom with no structural changes. Just think of, uh, somebody's coming in with a reconfiguration of their bathroom. There's going to be a new lab, new water closet, new shower.
Next slide.
The normal review process for, uh, this type of, uh, request will have a planning entitlement phase, and then after they receive their approval from the planning entitlement phase, then we will be moving to the plan check, building, uh, review phase, and finally permits and inspections. Next slides. Uh, to talk about the planning entitlement phase, I think we have Tyler Eaton, our senior planner, and I'll pass the presentation to Tyler.
Thanks, Yolanda. So as, as Yolanda mentioned, this example is an over the counter level two, which basically is any over the counter level application that requires more than just planning, uh, in the review process. So as mentioned, this example includes a remodel with less than 5% exterior demolition. Environmental health, health was referred because of, uh, impact to the onset of a sort of treatment system. Other departments may also have to review these, uh, just so you guys know. For example, Public Works reviews the female flood zone, they review, uh, drainage. Could be coastal engineering, could be envi- uh, geology, if there's foundations. But for this particular example, it's just planning, which is mostly level two, uh, and the environmental health. So there is an increase proposed for planning from, uh, 397 to 581. This fee includes, uh, two reviews, which typically was done with two hours of review time. We've noticed that it takes about three hours in those reviews. An hour and a half each to kind of capture the level of complexity, uh, and, uh, I'll tell you, after one of the, talk about environmental health.
For environmental health, usually the type of review that is being done at this level, uh, under planning review is verify the, uh, number of fixtures, the adequacy also of the system, to make sure that they are using a low flow water closet specification. Uh, the fee, uh, on this graphic shows a minimum of two reviews, and that is what is the, uh, presented in front of you. The amounts that we're currently are, 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 are charging, and it's show under fiscal year 23, 24, and then the proposed, uh, is by the matrix study. As you can see, there is an increment, and there, and we wanted to have a clear comparison so the council and the community knows, uh, this type of projects, what it has. Next slide.
Yolanda.
Yolanda, it's a question.
Yes.
I'm just trying to, in the original description, over the counter, it, they said they want, there was no structural changes. They wanted to put in a new toilet. Is that what this is, they would have to pay this just to put in a new toilet?
This is for the planning phase.
This is for a ba- bathroom remodel.
Paul Bell.
Yeah.
We're going to get, we're giving you a scenario.
I'm just trying to fig- huh, okay. But if you just have to replace my toilet.
Not just replacing it.
That's my question.
They're, they're coming in for an interior remodel. They're making possibly the bathroom a little bit bigger.
But, okay, but it said no structural changes, so I'm just trying to figure out.
Yeah.
You could have a wall and have it not structure.
We could now, when we.
Go ahead, I'm, I'm just want to make sure I'm on the same page as everybody else.
And so I, and thank you for bringing this to our attention. The, uh, non-structural changes is when, uh, we have non-bearing walls in, uh, move. We can have an interior wall that does not, is not bearing, and that is the reason why.
I understand, okay.
The next phase of the project is the plan check review phase. Under the plan check review phase, uh, the, we see the full construction of how this is going to happen, right? We, uh, we are anticipating that we're going to be reviewing the project again to comply with the California plumbing code, with the California electrical code, with the California energy code. Uh, the fees, uh, normally for this type of project when there is a remodel, you see it, uh, we will have a building permit of $215 currently, and it's increasing to $232. Uh, there's an administrative fee that is, uh, normally, uh, asked at the time that it's being submitted, and then an environmental help to make sure that everything that was reviewed under the planning entitlement is consistency with the construction plans. Construction plans are a lot more detailed, uh, information, uh, and it takes, uh, it takes about two, two reviews to complete something like this. Uh, the next step after the, uh, this project, this, this project receives approval by the different, uh, departments, we get to issue the permits. Under the building permit, again, uh, we have a, uh, atomized lines of everything that is being charged for. Uh, this is considered a non-structural, less than 500 square feet remodel. Uh, it will trigger building and safety technology fee, it will trigger an administrative fee, document retention fee, a strong motion fee, uh, and we added a credit card fee just so, so, so council and community is aware that there is a specific, uh, number for that. Yes, Council.
What is a strong motion fee?
Thank you for asking that question. A strong motion fee is, is, see, I was anticipating you were going to ask that.
Sorry, I spoke wrong.
It's a state, uh, it's actually the California Department of Conservation. The Division Administration requires that every permit that we issue, we collect a strong motion implementation that helps with seismic hazard mapping fees to, for them to continue being updated. The jurisdictions are required to submit their reports every three months, and additionally, we have, uh, usually an average of, um, the amount of money which pays, collects of this amount, it's about $4,800, and that.
Which portion can come back to the state? You have to find good reason to be spread in a home in with their seismic goals, and then you can petition for it. Some cities wait 20, 30 years to collect this, and it's enough to do a fairly substantive analysis in a city. So just good to know.
Could a soft story program be something that you use in that?
I know. You're, you're able to petition for anything within that vision of seismic awareness, so maybe informing a structural community of the city's needs to identify these buildings, and why you should get your building checked, they might say, this sounds good, but you're not going to.
Okay, thank you. These are very reverse C work essence.
Woo, that rubber band gets stretched a little too far. These are engineers, seismic engineers, so. But they, they want to get rid of this money, it's a trust, it's a, it's part of the ton of that, no one uses it.
Copy, you do that right there.
The next slide, uh, on this type of project, we anticipated you will have a plumbing permit. You will also have a mechanical and electrical, and the type of inspections that is normally done on this type of project, we will have a rock plumbing, through the rock plumbing. Our inspectors are verifying the waste vents, the water lines, the underground plumbing, uh, and then, uh, the shower pan, the shower lat. Um, there's a rock electrical, we are verifying wiring switches, location, receptacle locations, the interior lighting, and the rock mechanical. We are also verifying the exhaust fans, uh, and, uh, any known bearing framing that is applicable, also be will be included into all of this fees. We provided a total fee comparison, so you have an idea of somebody doing a, a bathroom remodel that is reconfiguring that room, um, with the less than 500 square feet, and this is, uh, the comparison from what we're currently charging to the proposed, uh, matrix fee style. With that, we will follow into the next example. The next example is an admini-
Let me do that.
Yes.
Yolanda.
Yes, sir.
Let me just ask you a question. Go back and start. As I'm watching all of these various fees and categories, um, I'm trying to think of like a flow chart. I'm trying to think where value added is going to be. And I heard you make the comment that this is code requirement, okay? I understand code requirements in the background. And then I, I get the feeling that we're doing quality control work on the contractor, the builder, or. And I, I go back to, when I see, like, women inspectors, not, uh, private women inspectors, do. My business can purchase triple that charge inspections, where they go in and make a review of it. They look at things very quickly and just say, okay, those are all live and clean. Do you seem to be nickel and dime, and that is important, but you seem to have a lot of steps in here for what might be just code compliance, quality control, you really need to be inspecting and paying up like this.
There's minimum code requirements by the state of California. All your inspections is not just quality control, it's to make sure that they, we adhere to the minimum requirements by the state of California. I gave you a, a, a very deep breakdown of, of, of bathroom remodel. But think of, uh, somebody that is putting in a house, somebody that is pouring a pile, somebody that's putting a foundation system. Then your electrical solar panels, we want to be sure that they are part plants that also be high target, adhere to what we have approved, that the areas are per the approved set of plans. So all of what we do as a development services, it's not that we are trying to add more to the basket. This is exactly following the minimum code requirement by the state.
Okay, that's, that's what I was trying to get at, that's one. Here was magic words, I mean, Bruce.
So, um. There are state requirements, oh, I'm sorry, first question is, are we required to require permits for these things, or do we do that as a matter of legally this period to require permits?
Chapter one, chapter one of the California Building Code, volume one, established what requires permit and it does not require permit. Your matrix, your fee schedule is based on those items that require permits. Anything that doesn't require permit is not part of your fee schedule.
It's, we, we don't require a permit for anything the state of California doesn't mandate we require a permit for.
Yeah, we stay within the, with what has been adopted for it by council. Every three years, we bring, uh, to council an ordinance, and part of the ordinance is, uh, providing, not only to council, to the whole community. This is the next three years of how the state of California is mandating and is requiring the development process under building and safety to move forward.
Okay, so in this example, whatever these people are going to be doing in this hypothetical to remodel their bathroom, all the permits that we're charging for are things that are required by state law to require a permit?
That is correct.
Okay.
State have a question.
A question, you know, does the state also define what we have to do to issue a permit? Let me, let me just give you an example, but there's a plumbing permit, right? And we've got plumbers that have been doing plumbing for years. And if you sat them down and said, okay, here are the rules you got to follow. You got to have a slow flow to- toilet, whatever that is, and you're a licensed plumber, so here's a list, here's a list of all the stuff you got to do to get your permit. What I want you to do is do the work, give you a document act that says you have accomplished all this stuff based upon, you know.
We don't do a.
Testify to that, and then seems to me if they could get the work done, we wouldn't have to do much.
We don't do a cell certification, that is not allowed by the code. Again, I am going back to chapter one of the California Building Code, uh, volume one, chapter one. It was specified what, the necessity of having those inspections, and who can perform those inspections, and under what authority they're, uh, inspecting, uh, those items. We also have a plumbing code that again, under chapter one, is dictated what is required. This again has been, we have been doing this for a long.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to understand, right, you know.
Yes, and no, and I'm glad that we're having those conversations, so it's clear for the community that is, that we're not trying to add steps to it, this.
When I look at this, it's sort of like, you know, things, like we're getting nibbled to death by ducks. I mean, every time.
I just want to mention that, uh, for planning also, it's, uh, what we require is covered in chapter 17. Uh, there's a list of things that, that, uh, the planning department needs to review, or the planning director needs to issue a decision on, and some of those might not even require a building permit. For example, a fence, a lot of times doesn't require a building permit, but it still requires planning approval because it's in Title 17 that says the planning director needs to make, uh, a, a decision on these things because there's development standards for fences and things like that, so just wanted to.
But is, is that, are those, do you subscribe to things that we're mandated by state law to require, or something we've just decided as a matter of proof against the putting of laws?
It's in our local code for planning.
We, we can change that, we can't change the things in the state.
I think, I need to progress.
Paul, I just, I just want to reiterate that what we're talking about here is a remodel where maybe the, we're not taking out a broken toilet and putting a new toilet on the same location. We may be moving it over a foot or two, and then you've got a shower that's being a new shower. I don't know if that means there wasn't a shower before, but it probably means that they're changing out all the tile and things like that, and opening the wall, and putting new fixtures behind it. And the, from, strictly from a consumer, uh, protection, you want somebody to look at the, the connections that are made in pipes that are going to be hidden inside the wall and all the rest of that, because it's, it's very easy to do things wrong and not have anything come, show up for a year or two, and then all of a sudden people have rot in their walls or floors, and it's, so.
And, and, and to, to simplify it even further, the reason that a plumber needs to get licensed is because a plumber can kill you. They can end up a super line and, and squirt it into your kitchen closet, and it would be a good thing. So all of us who have licenses as, as miss, have them to the protection of the public. This is the last resort check, so, um, you are correct that potentially they're streamlining in some of these procedures. We can address that when we get to the end of the presentation and discuss those pieces.
The, the reason I was asking you about the mandated to have these permits, and I accept the answer that we are, is automobiles also have all kinds of legal requirements, but you go to the mechanic, they fix it, they don't get any kind of inspection under your annual or regular inspection, which is a routine and nothing.
or regular inspection, which is a routine and nothing. And you're going to let them fill some of their equipment if your car broke or if it parts and they're bad.
There's a reason I reached...
But we don't have these kinds of requirements for automobiles, so it seems odd to me that we're mandated to have all these things for housing.
I mean, we can spend a lot of time, this is, there's twenty-four, there's thirteen volumes of Building Code, so we can spend a lot of time, but I think our focus is on our fees. We want your fee back. We want it provided, you put, what are we doing? How much are we charging?
But to go back to that, I, I wanted to understand if we're required to have these because then what we charge is a matter of economics. But if we're not required to have a permit in the first place, it's a different analysis of what we want to require, that goes into the fee analysis. But you're saying these are all mandated?
Yes, if, if I could just add to that comment, there is always a subjective or professional interpretation that in that, in many of these, you know, geotechnical issues are not clear sciences. They are saying, gosh, see something here, maybe I might look a little more. So there are subjective components. Once, once you find the thing that you thought was there, you've got those code issues that trigger on it. The building officials' responsibility is to make sure that they haven't overlooked something that could be a note and look for a permit. So there's subjectivity that is embedded in their position in addition to the code.
We could, we have a question for Senator Polo. I will make one quick comment. I almost wish now after I've heard this discussion, this was entitled something along the lines, we just had a double process in code portion. And groups are going to look at what is optional, but it's not, turns out it's not optional. It's a code portion because of the intersection.
It's called compliance.
Right, you go ahead.
The next item that we are looking at, the administrative plan review, the type of project, we're looking at administrative plan review level four, and I will have Tyler explain more in extent when he's going over his slide. The project description is a beachfront, a deck repair, more than fifty percent replacement that we need to have waterproof, re-tiling. It will be built in the same location and it will be the same size. And again, this is just a scenario. We're not showing you the plans and we're avoiding detail on the stuff, but we want to give you an overview of what this project is all about. And with that, I'll have the two pipe.
Yeah, so as, also with, with the over the counter, you'll see the trend here, there's the three phases, there's the planning entitlement phase, well, two phases, planning entitlement phase, project review phase, and then the building permit that gets issued at the very end. So next slide. So as, as Yolanda mentioned, this example is an administrative plan review level four which is considered a minor APR. It's typically for minor exterior remodels, minimal site work. This could include landscaping, water grading, new pools, new decks, et cetera. This is a deck repair where more than fifty percent of the deck is being replaced, so for code purposes, it's considered a new deck. And so it has to comply with all the parameters of new deck. So if you have nonconformity, you lose it. So in this case, the APR minor fee was one thousand five ninety. It's proposed to be increased to three thousand two hundred and sixteen. It includes two rounds of incomplete gutters, one site visit, one final inspection, a CDP exemption that we have to send to state. Includes dark sky lighting review if there's, if there's outdoor lighting. There's plant check, pre-plant check and final plant check performance reviews to double check that the approval did not change in plant check. That's the green and red stamp process that you might have heard of. And then for this one, there's other, because of foundations and things, there's other departments that need to be involved. There's coastal engineering, on the beach, environmental health, geology, and public works. Before we get to the EST part of it, again, Public Works is reviewing for things, I don't want to speak too much about it, we have it here, but they're reviewing for things like thermal flood zone, drainage, and drainage, and they were referred in this project, but I'll pass it back to Yolanda for the EST portion.
Yeah, and before we move out of this slides, the environmental health review on the planning stage, are you going to ensure that the protection of the on-site wastewater treatment system is being kept? We also are ensuring under geotechnical review, if there's new foundations that are going to be proposed, we're reviewing it, geotechnical, and reviewing that the technical report that goes along with it. And then under the coastal engineering, we want to review the wave, wave approach and the beachfront property. Next slide. Again, after receiving a planning entitlement phase approval, it will be submitted through the building and safety for the plant check review. And this again will have a fee for building plant check to make sure that it complies with all the California state requirements and local ordinance. We also have the environmental health fee, the geotechnical fee, the coastal fee, and on the plant check building fee, remember, we've had a balcony that had a major repair or it's going to be rebuilt. And this is just a scenario that we wanted to provide for you. The totals for a project, we, of this, of this type of scenario, we have it at the bottom, the proposed and the current and proposed. Not a lot of difference, it went, it went up by twenty, twenty-eight dollars. So the fee stays very consistent. After the project receives approval, then we get to issue the building permit with the construction plans approved by all of the different divisions, which will have technical, stamp the plans, coastal engineering, planning will stamp the plans again, Public Works and Building and Safety. This type of process, we are reviewing to make sure that it also complies with the high fire hazard severity zones, that the decking materials are within, within those requirements. We are reviewing drainage, structural review, will concentrate on the framing, the foundation, the detailed review, the structural calculations, waterproofing materials, et cetera. And under the inspections, foundations if they're applicable, you will usually have piles on the beach, so we will make sure that all of those elements are per plan and following the guidelines of the California code, minimum requirements. Total fee for something of this case study, you will see it, proposed eleven thousand, currently about nine thousand dollars.
Let me ask, ask some questions here. One more, one more time.
Yes.
I got a deck, and part of my deck is rotted out. All I want to do is replace the deck I had out, right? I'm not going to change anything, I'm not going to move anything. It's going to cost me nine thousand dollars to get a permit to do that?
This is a beachfront deck.
I don't care where it's from, beachfront, I have, I'm not changing anything. All I'm doing is, is taking my existing deck, I want to resurface it, right, put some tile there, waterproof it, and keep it going.
Now, what you just mentioned wouldn't qualify for, I mean, over the counter.
That was the description I had.
If you had to structurally replace the elements, so the framing elements of the deck, if you, the wire codes are written, you lose your nonconformities if you go more than fifty percent. So if you do demo more than fifty percent of the deck, you might have a nonconforming streamline or nonconforming setback or nonconforming height. And so that deck might have to comply with our code, that's, that's the way it's reviewed. So we do have to review it as a new deck, and so we might have to review for setbacks, we have to review for compliance with all the term requirements in this case.
And just, let me just, and for building and safety, the project will be also completely determined. Now we're talking about a repair, the minor heavy foundation system, so there's a lot of variables that you're bringing to attention. For a, a repair that is minor repair deck, it's about one hour of review and one hour of inspection. We're talking about two hundred and thirty-two dollars. That does not require a new foundation system. So there's a lot of variables, and that's why our fee schedule is so detailed and has so much information. So we, we selected three different scenarios, but the number of varieties that we get, we could not cover all of them.
Bruce?
Public Works, I just saw in the planning entitlement, is there a reason why their fees aren't applied at their places? So yes, I'll answer that one. Our fees, when you take them in during the planning entitlement phase, are intended to take you all the way through final inspection. Now, if plans we receive go through more than just a minor review and we have to ask for corrections or edits, we track our time associated to those reviews, and if we need additional fees, we reach out to the applicant directly. Thank you. You're welcome.
Bruce?
What's the probable range of the total cost of the project itself, this eleven thousand dollar...
Do you ask due per valuation?
No, somebody on the beachfront that wants to replace their, that's going to be doing what's going to be required here, what's their project probably cost? We have a...
The private with our contractor?
I'm trying, I'm trying to understand what percentage of the value of the whole project this represents, the cost of, of speculating. Well, there's got to be a range.
But fees aren't charged based on valuation, it's on time.
That's not answering my question, I want to understand what percentage it is.
Bruce, a simple wood deck is going to be a lot cheaper than somebody who wants to put a, an engineered deck out there and then come in with stone and lay stone on it and everything. So they've added a whole lot of weight and all that, all that kind of engineering ends up costing a lot more money. It's like, if I go to Home Depot and pick up a toilet, it's gonna, I can buy the cheapest one they have or the most expensive. If I go to Snyder Diamond and buy their most expensive toilet, it's going to be three or four times as much. It's the same thing with deck services with, with, you know, do I want the, the wood to be E-Pay or do I want it to be deadwood?
Okay, I get all that and understood all that in advance. Paul, I'm asking is, is there a range of that, of costs that this is likely to be applied to for this project so I can understand how this compares to the overall cost of the project?
The reason I answered the way I did is because the fees, when you say they're not based on valuation, they're going to be assessed regardless of what the final cost that the customer is paying their contractor.
Okay, I am one of the people who's got to decide what I think a proper fee that the city should charge is. I think it's relevant to me to understand what percentage of the overall cost of the project this is. So that's why I'd like to understand that data point.
I understand what you're saying, but any resident throughout Malibu are going to pay different fees depending on what they want. It could fit into the same scenario.
I understand the...
But, no, but what I'm saying is that one resident may pay their contractor thirty thousand dollars to do this work, where somebody else is going to pay thirty thousand or three hundred thousand, just because the variance of the materials, the contractor that they're paying for, the other design elements that there might be part of that. And that's all out of the realm of the city's knowledge. So we, we can't tell what the general public is going to choose as their components for their project outside of our realm.
And I'm going to go back to Bruce's question, I think his question is right on point. I mean, the resident comes in and says, you know, the fees you're charging, my total cost for this project is X, and your fees are eleven thousand dollars worth of this thing. I mean, so they're upset how much it costs to get this done. And we're just trying to get a sense, it says, you know, if they're, if it costs me another eleven thousand dollars to get the deck finished, that's one thing. If it costs me, you know, five thousand dollars to get the deck finished and I'm paying eleven thousand dollars for the fee, that's another, you know, just some basic...
And it may, the other members of council may not have a tactic like for this, but what I'm trying to understand is, if, if I were told the average cost of doing this kind of project is a hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars, then I'd be saying to myself, okay, eleven thousand versus anywhere in that range doesn't bother me too much. If I was told it could be anywhere as low as ten thousand dollars for the project and anywhere as high as a half million, I might want to, I would want to propose that we actually have a sliding scale price on a permit depending on the value of, on the cost of the project. That's my view, and that's why I'm asking for this information. And I think I'm entitled to understand that so that I can form an informed decision as to where I come out on this.
I under, so I think my comment back to you would be the fact that, I lost my train of thought.
I'm glad.
That, that the way the city is recuperating their fees is the amount of time that it takes staff to accomplish the review, to be code compliant with any proposal that a applicant brings to the city to do something. But it takes the same amount of time whether it's a less expensive deck or a more expensive deck.
Totally get that, but I'm still entitled to make a judgment, a qualitative judgment that we shouldn't charge somebody that full amount depending on what it's costing them compared to the whole cost. You might disagree with me, but that's...
Well, no, well, I think I'd refer to Joe to say, what can we legally do as a city as far as cost recovery on this?
I don't know if I'm going to comment on it, neither on the legality of it, but I, I could say administratively, and I understand what everybody's saying, I don't think anyone's saying anything wrong from either perspective, but I think it would be hard for us to do the accounting versus these projects. It's hard to verify.
It's difficult when I get a project, the contractor did it before I started the work, like I have a pretty good idea what it's going to cost, right? I mean, I know that when I...
And we will be, thank you, the...
We have a better contractor than I do.
I'd love to when you're lost.
All right, let's move over to Paul.
So in your council agenda, we're scheduled the fees that we're all talking about, planning fees, and safety fees, everything else. What Councilmember Riggins was referring to is on page thirteen, there is residential remodeling, which is a percentage of construction fee. So that would address your concern about the sliding scale, the more money, the more the fee, the less the project value, the less the fee. So that is built in to her fee schedule.
Are you talking about page fourteen of the report or page fourteen of the...
It's twelve of thirteen of your resolution, it is page fourteen, I guess relative to the report. It says residential remodels, modern, non-structural, it's a unit value equation.
I think it's fourteen of the... So is it the resolution, page twelve, twenty-three?
It's September, sorry, November, September, council, today is the...
It may have to be four. But there is a component of your plan that's building fee that directly follows value equation two.
Okay, let's, if we can, let's move on with, I think there's one, one point being made too. Part of it...
I just want to make, clarify, it does not follow violation. What our inter-planning managers, directors talking about is that under that portion of a, for when you're building something complex, new constructions, you get a fee. When you're doing a remodel, you get a percentage of that amount that we normally for new construction. It's not based on valuation. Just want to make that clear for everybody that we don't have our fees, our fees on validation.
Okay, and also make the comment, it's not just the quality of the material, it's also the size of the project too. You know, a hundred foot square deck is going to cost you something different than a thousand square foot. But our cost of code compliance here should be a fixed job.
Things to consider when we're having to redo a major deck, right? To get, it depends on the location, the geography, the geology, the landslide that might be close to it, the seismic zone where it is. You might have piles that are very deep and that could, the structural costs will go up. We might have a garrel that is not just your normal garrel, that it will be all glacing with dual, so it depends a lot on the, what the design and also what the property owner wants to have as part of their home improvements.
And does it truly cost the city the same at the different extremes of those options? Or is this just an average cost that we have as an, as a number of areas?
We just gave you a, a, as, as one scenario.
So we're actually, we are actually probably overcharging people of simple projects and undercharging people of complex projects?
No, this is not a, a fee for all of the fee, for all the decks.
It's not?
No.
I thought it was a fee for all beachfront decks over fifty percent of the replacements.
Ah, this...
A thunder. No, it was over fifty percent.
Is there a square foot?
I thought that was the hypothetical parameters, beachfront deck over fifty percent of the replacements, a major.
Major, so major could include, go back on the building and safety.
So for planning, it would be the same fee regardless of the size? So for planning, it's the same thing?
And would it require the same type of work regardless of size?
Well, for planning review, yes.
Okay, whether for building and...
Whether it's, you know, the everyday homeowner or it's the major person, it's, if that's the scope of work, that's the fee that we're charging the planning fees.
And you require the same amount of, you, you do the same amount of work to get there no matter which project?
Ah, I wouldn't say that because it could be, a larger deck could be more complex, it could have more issues. Again, again, geographically, whereas located, it could have different locations, so, but we do, it is an average, it's not a, yeah. So, so you are, I would say you're probably right in that maybe the bottom pocket, you know, everyday Malibu resident, you know, there could be a situation where they're, they pay more because the person who's doing the extravagant deck is, is paying maybe less, right?
So the average is being developed from all the different...
Yeah, it's the same.
Okay. Yolanda, let's move on.
Yes, just, they, they, we do have a minor and major remodel for decks on our fee schedule, so that under building safety. So we will move now to our coastal development event, something that is more complex. I will let Tyler describe the complexity under the coastal act and the information on planning. We are considering this a, another example, not that all of the projects that come in fall under this description, but think of a major remodel when existing family residents to include exterior wall demolition, waterproof, and that exceeds fifty percent. There's the remodel also with attached garage, we have also a deck extension, and then it has a few variances of tighter work through it. Next slide. It will follow the same process, the same development of code compliance process, you have your planning entitlement phase, then we have your plant check review phase, permits and inspections. Tyler?
Thanks, Yolanda. So, yeah, this is an example of the CDP level four, which typically is a new single-family home from scratch or it's a major remodel with some extensive site work. Again, similar to APR, this could include landscaping, it could include grading, new pools, decks, specifically for CDPs, accessory dwelling units, guest homes can be included in this type of work. So it's not just a single-family home, but you could have your whole site developed under this CDP fee. As Yolanda mentioned, it's, this example specifically is a major remodel where the fifty percent of the exterior walls are being replaced in this application. There's a remodel to the garage, an upgrade deck extension, and there's a variance for being proposed for slope, development on slope steeper than two and a half to one, and a site plan review which is typical for development over eighteen feet in height. And, sorry, go back quickly, I think, example, someone triggered the, oh, thank you. So you can see here, our fees, planning-wise, we are, we are proposing an increase in the CDP variance and site plan review fees. You know, it does seem like a lot, but the base, you know, prior review of these applications took a lot less work, I would say. These days, there's, even though you see that it includes three reviews, two site inspections, three hearings, the dark sky lighting review, green and red stamp, and final planning inspection, there's a lot more that goes into it that are kind of hidden, hidden costs. There's a lot of back and forth with residents, concerned parties. We do site inspections for concerned parties that are included in these fees. This could, this could be four, three, four, or five public hearings, planning commission, city council. And so this is just an upfront fee that they pay, but it does vary, similar to the deck example where if you're, if you're great and you make everything according to the code, maybe in that case you may overpay, I don't want to say for sure, but in the, in the case where people are five, six, seven, eight, nine reviews deep, you know, three, four, five, planning commission hearings... four, five, planning commission hearings deep, they're paying a similar cost, uh, so it's, it's kind of an average in that case. Um, and I'll pass it, uh, to Yolanda for the ESD portion.
Within the, uh, planning entitlement phase, there are also multiple fees that are charged for coastal engineering, geology, environmental health. Uh, think of, uh, major project might have grading plans, uh, with a, uh, complex technical report, uh, or D O T S report, per collection, per collection, uh, re, uh, reports that we need to review. And so all of those fees are captured, and that is by the list looks so, uh, a long list, um, uh, under public work. Do you want to talk about public work?
It would apply no different than, thank you, Yolanda, it would apply no different than to an over encounter or a administrative plan review. Our time is assessed, um, at entitlement phase, and then as we go through our reviews, if additional fees deemed necessary because there's been multiple phases of this review, we'll just add, request additional fees. Um, there are more fees in the, this presentation for the plan check phase, as we have other element fees that will come on this type of scenario.
And Brandon, you would also reverse if?
If requested, uh, yes, Joe. Uh, we have the ability to refund any public works fees at the end of a project once, um, certificate of occupancy has been acquired, because we do track our time against all the fees, so any remaining fees can go back to the app can, if they, uh, still request that fee. Yes, thank you.
And with that, uh, now the project is moving into plan check review, construction plans, a lot more time as in being involved on the review of the separate projects. Uh, think of the complexity on your structural calculations, uh, on your multiple requirements for not only energy, uh, plumbing, mechanical, electrical, uh, make sure that all of those nodes on those plans, all of the details on the plans comply with the minimum code requirements. So it's, it's, it's a lot of time spent, uh, to make sure compliance with local and state regulations.
Thank you. Paul, do you have a question?
No. I was just going to say, if you have an older house and you do an over fifty percent remodel, you're basically building a brand-new house. Because you're meeting all of today's codes, you're doing, you know, the seismic codes, everything else, so it's, it's as complex as building a brand-new house.
Sometimes more so.
Sometimes more so, especially if you want it to still look like you, from the outside, like you didn't do anything.
And, and with that topic, uh, think of our codes, our building codes. Every three years, the State of California revises those codes, comes out with, uh, more regulations. So this comes directly from the State of California Building Standard Commission, uh, so that's how this is generated. Um, after that, uh, we have our permits, uh, building permits, and so think about, we're going to have caissons, gray beams, uh, um, this is a major structural remodel, and so the cost is, uh, showing below, uh, very close to what we were, uh, were currently doing on the proposed, five thousand three hundred twenty-two, five seven twenty-nine, and, uh, we anticipate we will have our electrical permit with something like this. Think of there possibly having an upgrade of a panel, and then our final fees, uh, for a type of this type of project, uh, we show the current and the most, and then I'll, um, let Tyler speak regarding the planning inspections.
And real quick, I think Yolanda made a great point that, and the complexity increases as we adopt new ordinances, so with the dark sky lighting ordinance, with the landscape fire conservation ordinance. So as the ordinance get more and more complex and the, and the level of review gets more and more complex, there's more and more things that the city has to check for, and so that's, that's why our fees are kind of, uh, being proposed to be increased. One thing we did have for planning, uh, we, we did a lot of upfront costs instead of, uh, after the fact, so our, we included the, it's not much, but we included the planning final inspection fee into the beginning cost. Uh, the biology fee is a contract biologist, and, uh, her fee is being proposed to slightly be increased, but that's her, not only final inspection fee, but any, any inspection that the biologist has to do, that's the fee that she charges.
So there could be, I'm sorry, there could be multiple biology fees?
There could, there could be, yeah. One, for an example, one, before a planning commission hearing, uh, biologist was asked to go verify some of the information on the biological assessment, and so in that case, we sent her out, the applicant had to pay for her inspection to verify the information on the biological assessment. And then, then there's, there's post, once the landscaping is installed, there's post-inspections that happen.
Okay, this is a quick question. Um, I see this as being just paperwork so far. What about the on-site inspections as the house is being built? Is that included?
It is included on the permits.
Okay, so the permit, so.
Permits.
So the permits are six thousand dollars, I mean, it's covered with multiple inspections, electrical, plumbing?
Uh, yes, especially for something like this, that we have caissons, uh, that we need to make sure that insulation is properly, uh, uh, in place, that we also make sure all of the features for the high fire hazard, uh, that, that, the glazing of those windows, the exterior materials that are, uh, firebath, fire resistant, and, um, with the materials in your roof, the height of the, the structures, the drainage, make sure that, that the drainage are, uh, are adequately, uh, in place, so when we have wet weather, we don't have a, uh, a disaster. So think of building a safety, uh, safeguards for the safety of the community.
Okay, perfect. Um, these permit fees or inspections last for as long as the house is ever constructed to a given, to a given, right? So in the case in the same period of time, you know, thinking about houses that start and stop, start and stop, there's no additional fees, correct?
So, um, permit, so let's talk about that duration of a permit. Under the building code, it used to be a hundred and eighty days, you call for an inspection every hundred and eighty days. After the several fires that the State of California has suffered, the, um, the codes were changed, uh, anticipated that people needed more time. So now it's three hundred and sixty-five days. So every three hundred and sixty-five days, you need to call for an inspection. So, yes.
Brandon?
Um, in addition to that, if there's a code change, could they be required to do a code update, or would that be required as a control? If they take too long to do the construction?
That is correct, uh, mayor of the town. The, when projects take a long time, um, that extends the, the code cycle, we have projects that it started construction, we're just talking about a project last week that started construction in twenty twelve, and suddenly get the foundation system and stopped within a year, and we haven't heard back from them. So if they were to, um, move forward, first they need to go to the planning department, make sure the, um, the planning director establish a commence, uh, approval for construction, and then after that, they're sent back to building a safety, and at that time, absolutely, they will need to, uh, submit, uh, plans to comply with current codes. And just to give you an example of our, everything. Hi.
I need to, too much Yolanda.
What's up, protection, would you start? Keep going.
Steve, so I guess we move on to, uh?
Yes, uh, another item that, what we've wanted, example that we wanted to bring to you is our outdoor lighting review, which is our dark sky ordinance, uh, to the project before you think of, and it's standalone, uh, and let's, uh, exterior lighting, hopefully the remodel only is exterior lighting and rewiring of all the structure. We're not talking about a CDP or an APR because those items were already included on the review. This is a standalone, and they're doing a major exterior remodel, uh, of the lighting only. Uh, it will follow the same, um, uh, process, you will have an entitlement, uh, planning phase, then it will follow the plan check review phase, and finally a permit and inspection.
I'm sorry, is this something that, um, a current property will be to do to comply with the dark sky ordinance, or is this a different scenario?
This is a scenario when, um, let me, this is a scenario when the complete lighting outside of the existing home is being, uh, re, uh, meaning new electrical wiring, new fixtures moved in at different locations. If you're talking about your, and thank you for bringing this to, uh, the attention of the presentation, if you're talking about an experience, uh, existing house that are only changing the light bulbs, or the shielding is being, um, added, they do not require a permit. This is only when they're completely wiring the outside, the, we have a proposed owner that wants to change all the lighting around it, and now we, uh, they need to comply with our dark sky ordinance.
But if, if we, say if someone has an estate and they have non-compliant dark sky, non-compliant lighting, and they have to bring their lighting in accordance with the dark sky ordinance required, is this the review that they're going to do in order to?
Yes, if they're doing re-wiring, if they're not just changing the bulbs, or, yeah.
Because their fixtures should comply, or?
And then there's new rewiring, and there's new location of, of fixtures.
So just change without the fixtures, doesn't require these?
No.
Okay. Yeah, so, um, and so, uh, back to, uh, Mayor, Mayor Protan's point, so just to reiterate, if you guys, uh, this is just for outdoor lighting, so if you're just to change your lighting, if you're doing a remodel, you're changing, you know, the stucco on your house, those are covered in the APR, so if, uh, if you wanted to do a re, remodel to your house and add lighting, it's covered under the APR fee. This is just specifically for, you're trying to comply with the dark sky ordinance, basically. Uh, and so if you, and go back one slide, I'm sorry. Uh, the planning fee, we are proposing to increase to a thousand fifteen, and the level, uh, it's because we used to charge a over-the-counter level one type fee, which is simple, you come in, and hopefully same day we give you approval. We found out that the dark sky, uh, ordinance is a lot more complex than anticipated, and so the review is pretty complex. Sometimes there's, um, there's, uh, the photometric that's involved to make sure that the light doesn't trespass onto the neighborhood property, and there's code enforcement that has to take place, a lot of communication, it goes back and forth, and so what we thought was hopefully a one-time review, like it's simple, it's, it's usually a three, four, or five review, uh, and so we're, that's why we're trying, uh, proposing the, the additional fees here.
I also remind the council, back in the beginning of the year, we, uh, the city, went for an RFP for a lighting consultant that can help us do this type of review, a lighting expert engineer that can also help with the reviews as they're coming in, uh, as you know, staff, uh, your staff, we do not have those expertise in-house, and that was the reason, you know, attaining those services and contract services. Uh, and so, so all the fees, the proposed fees that are a little bit higher are being nexted on those, on those contracts.
Okay, so, uh, a typical homeowner to come into compliance with dark skies lighting, they might either just require their fixtures to be changed, so if they're staying in the same location, no change to the location, just the change of the fixture toward dark skies compliant fixture? They need an electrical permit, or they don't need any permit at all?
And we have an inventory of that.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Steve, do you have a question? He said you have multiple reviews of this stuff. Is that because the person submitting it is doing it wrong, they don't understand?
They don't understand, yeah. And they usually hire like a general contractor, or, uh, who, who is learning our code for the first time, is not familiar with dark sky principles, uh, and so, uh, and so it does take three or four reviews as usual.
So what are we doing about it? So what are we doing about it? Uh, we went and, uh, we had an RFP, we hired, we, um, the council, uh, gracefully approve a contract service for a policy, um, writing engineer, the lighting engineer that is helping us on this. What we are working towards that is that, um, special worksheets be created for the community to utilize, to have a better understanding of what they need to do, how much they need to pay, and all of these, uh, documents are being created and drafted. Uh, and we will bring this back to the Environmental Self Committee, and eventually to, uh, the council, and then to the planning commission. But that is on the works, and, uh, we hopefully will have a draft for you, uh, in the next two, two, uh, two months.
I just remember, I mean, when we did a strategy meeting last year, there were multiples, not only for dark sky, but for just projects in general, multiple submissions, it comes in, you send a bag, it comes in, you send, and you like to think that somebody's hiring somebody that actually knows what the hell they're supposed to be doing and get it done right the first time, but I guess that is outside of our control, so, you know, it's strange.
Well, our code's complex also, so there are some things that.
And different specialists design different portions of the structure.
So now going into the plan check review stage, uh, knowing that we want our residents to be compliant, we want this to be a streamlined process, the one that they're not spending a lot of money, because we need their participation. Uh, but we consider at the project review, just one, one hour review, right? Uh, electrical review, energy, and dark skies, all in one. Uh, two hundred and fifteen dollars currently, uh, two hundred and thirty-two dollars pre-proposed. Um, so that is for the plan check, uh, review stage, and then, uh, as our major pro tan was mentioning, what is our, the, uh, electrical, uh, the, the dark skies, uh, under lighting permit looks like? It's an electrical permit. It's an electrical permit that, uh, we will, uh, charge two hundred and thirty-two dollars, uh, for us to do the inspection. Um, includes just one hour. We might go the first time, and they, they don't have everything correctly, so it's providing educational information, uh, it's helping, uh, the homeowner understand what they need to do, or even talking to the contractor. And the rest of the fees are associated with just your normal fees that we collect for an airway permit, or N, estate mandate, uh, fees. So a total fee for a, made a remodel, again, of, uh, always single-family resident existing with, uh, changing, uh, a lot of their exterior lighting, uh, these are the fees.
As we get to the commercial, real quick caveat, the numbers on your current outfit aside.
Yeah, the next one we wanted to give you also, um, commercial tenant improvements, commercial minor that we're calling, um, our gas station. Uh, just to give you an example, we wanted to capture the gas station because this is something that we went through, and we have, uh, currently, there's seven gas stations that are compliant, uh, and so with that, uh, your planning fees, uh?
Yes.
Oh, well, planning, well, uh, planning entitlement phase will follow the plan check review phase permitting, and then with that, our planning entitlement.
Yes, similar to residential, uh, the commercial properties, uh, are, are taking a lot more reviews than anticipated. Uh, we originally thought that two and a half hours was going to be enough to cover, uh, the amount of review time. I think with these gas stations, since we're, we're taking those as the example, we spent seven, eight, nine reviews, uh, to get these guys into compliance, because again, they don't, they don't have the expertise, and so it takes them a lot of time to find people, and so, uh, they start working with different contractors, and so we're, we're, we're starting over with different people, so it's, it's a very complex, and the dark sky process is, is new to folks, and so once we get people more educated on the program, we feel it's going to be a lot simpler, a lot smoother, uh, but, but for now, uh, it is, it is new to people. Uh, and there's a credit card fee there just to demonstrate that if they pay by credit card, which is what we do, there's, there's that fee associated.
And then under building and safety, again, going back to, now we're talking about a commercial property, um, and those are more intricate. We need a photometric, uh, review, uh, we learned, we learned that it took a long time for even do a, doing a side visit, coordination, and all of this needs to be at night, right? Because we cannot do it in the morning. So the coordination, uh, the lighting engineer coming in, staff going out there, so the lighting engineers not only going by themselves, uh, they are accompanied by a staff member to make sure that we are providing the quality control. So those, that's why your fees under the plan check review phase are a little bit higher than what you might expect, uh, and is due to also the contract services that are assisting us on getting, uh, these commercial properties under compliance. Uh, the permit fee, again, will be, uh, um... Uh, the permitting fee again will be, uh, um, we went from one hour to one thousand four hundred and ninety-nine and all the administrative and estate taxes, uh, we added also a credit card. That is the totals, um, under your, uh, and then your final totals for, um, a commercial tenant improvement. Uh, also on this, consider we might have a, um, parking lining that we are reviewing, uh, that we are going out there and inspect, that we have provided information, that we're doing several reviews, uh, to get them into compliance.
Does this include any new fixtures or coals?
Oh, I, I've, did we do an electric one? I'm sorry. There's an electrical permit.
But if they have to install new coals or new fixtures, is that included?
We cannot include it.
Okay.
Yeah. That will be additional fee who would leave whatever. Uh, thank you for calling, Bella.
Thank you.
And with that, I'm gonna pass it over to our environmental administrator, health administrator, to go over the next slides.
So Lisa, answer. Hello, I wanted to address a specific question that came up during one of the last council meetings. There was a question regarding the fees for the operating permits and the related inspection for a brand-new septic system. Next slide. So, so before this case scenario is for a new septic system, we've moved past the planning entitlement phase, the plan check stage and the permit stage. We're now in construction and finishing up our construction. With this final construction of the new septic system being installed, our city inspectors will be doing a final inspection. From there, an operating permit will be issued. Next slide. So I wanted to give a breakdown of these different steps just to address the questions that was asked. So as part of this inspection for the new residential advanced on septic water system or septic system, we charge a inspection fee. So our current fee is seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and our new proposed fee is going to eight hundred and seventy-four dollars. And this is for our inspectors to come out, look at the septic system, make sure it's meeting all the plan requirements, finaling the septic permit. That is one inspection or that will be done once the septic permit is final. After that, the operating permit will be issued. This operating permit fee for this particular scenario is five hundred and sixty dollars and is not proposed to increase as part of this fee setting. So the operating permit fee is all great.
Quick question, what's alternative inspection, alternative inspection?
That's related to the type of septic system. So there's two different kinds of septic systems. The conventional system, a normal tank, a elite filter sewage pit. An advanced or alternative system is more enhanced. You are treating the waste inside of the treatment tank or the septic tank much more with more UV, more bacteria, it's advanced.
Okay, so that's what the alternatives for, for the complex is.
That is correct.
Mary?
Is that different than the permit fee? So is there a permit fee and then a separate inspection fee? Or is that the inspection, the permit fee?
Are you referring to the operating permit or the septic?
The septic.
This is unrelated to the septic permit. So once the septic permit's been issued, we're now moving into the construction phase. So that is separate. I believe that was more so items that were recovered under the CDP case scenario that we went over.
I know this is just anecdotal, but this, this won't be here a lot for people. I mean, the septic company comes out and does the inspection and they tell the city they've done it. What does the city do that requires coverage of that or is this a common?
So we, you are correct. There are two different scenarios of inspections that are being done. So we do have a list of city-registered inspectors that do go out and inspect the septic system. What they do then is they provide us about a seven-page inspection report detailing every single component of the septic system, does it pass, does it fail, does it require repair? Our duty is to look at the inspection report, determine if it's in a passing condition. If so, we will issue the operating permit. If it's in failing condition, we will work with the homeowner or the septic installer to enter into a compliance agreement and to, to make sure that the, a new septic system will be installed to meet compliance.
So how often does the certified inspector tell you it's okay and you can do it?
If we do rely on our inspectors to provide us with accurate information.
Right, so, so they are certified, they're expert, they come out, they say it's either okay or it's not. They'll tell you it's okay or it's not. What do you, I, I get the bureaucracy say is they have to look at it. Although I'm not really sure I understand that.
Yeah.
So if, if they, if you, if they've been certified and they know what they're doing and they send you a report that says, asks, why is there a need to do anything? You know, put that in the file and scan it?
I would like to compare this comparison to what Yolanda was discussing earlier about the building code and the need to have the permits. The same thing as this scenario here. So we have a 2018 local agency management plan that was approved by the regional water quality control board. The regional water quality control board is, um, is the reason why we have this operating permit. So this is a requirement by the water board, not just a process that we are doing.
Okay, so the permits require, is, is the, is the re-review of the inspection that's already been performed required?
Yes, it is. We do need to review the inspection report to ensure that the system is in good or not good condition.
In addition, we are putting, um, every, thank you, Felicia. We, every year, we do an annual report that goes to the LA Water Board and they're very detailed on the information we're giving. Uh, we have constant communication with them and it's because of the responsibility of having a lab and, and the ability from the city to issue those permits. And I don't think we want to lose that.
Steve, do you have a question?
Just trying to understand what, what you just said a moment ago. And, okay, so you get the, you get this report from the certified inspector. He said he brings it in and says this thing's okey-dokey, okay? You look at the report and you say, it's good. What, what did you have to do after that? Do you have to go back out and look at it again?
No, we do not have to go out and look at it again. Uh, we review the report that was submitted.
Right.
Uh, and we will either issue the operating permit if it's in good condition or continue to work with the homeowner and OWTS practitioners if it is.
Okay, so, so it's a good report, basically you sign off on it and say yes, put it in the file, you're done.
Yes.
I also want to mention that, I'm sorry, I want to mention that, uh, in these five years that I have been serving for Malibu, there have been several occasions in which we get two different reports and one practitioner will tell me it's good to go and another one tell me it is failed. So it is the quality control that needs to happen.
Mary?
I think what, I think there's a consensus up here. We're trying to imagine, what are you doing for five hundred and sixty dollars? What exactly does that entail that that works out? You know, how many hours does that, what are the steps that are going into that?
Yeah, so five hundred and sixty dollars is an approximately four-hour review per day fee. This includes a correspondence with the OWTS practitioners in order to receive the inspection report. Uh, as part of that process, we issue a thirty-day notice before the operating permit expires. Uh, we issue a past due notice once the operating permit has expired and the owner has not due their, has not done their due diligence to renew it. Uh, after that, that may be staff time, uh, working with code enforcement because they are not meeting our regulations and requirements to renew their operating permit in time. Uh, it would also include the review of the seven-page inspection report, ensuring everything's in proper condition and if so, the operating permit will be renewed. If not, we will need to continue to work with the OWTS practitioner and the homeowner in order to enter into a compliance agreement, um, for the repairs.
Oh, I believe there's also an additional expense that the city is, is bearing in that we not only maintain a computerized database of this every time a septic system is pumped, when they go to offload the effluent and there is a report that comes to the city that says Bruce's house was, was pumped, my house, Paul's house was pumped, Mary Ann's house was pumped. And that gets put into the records for, for that individual house. And when they, if they, if, if we get our houses pumped more than twice in a year, then that, that sets off an alarm and causes another set of inspections.
That is correct, so that's another component. On a monthly basis, our team is working with LA County, Ventura County and all of our different pumping companies in order to obtain that pumping data. Uh, and then we review it to see who is considered frequently pumping. And we will reach out to those properties to make sure that they are getting an inspection of their septic system. Frequent pumping typically indicates something maybe not going well with their septic system.
Bruce has one. So if the certified inspector comes out and fails the, um, inspection, the, are there more costs involved to get the inspection approved ultimately? Or was that just the fee, whether you're approved or disapproved until such time as you're appointed?
So this five hundred and sixty-dollar operating permit fee is charged looks, uh, in order to issue the operating permit. If the inspection report comes back as failed, they will not be charged the five hundred and sixty-dollar operating permit.
Okay, so that's, that's, that's even worse than I was thinking it was.
Instead...
So, 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 so if, this is another example. In essence, if, if, if a resident passes, which is going to happen far more often than not, I imagine. They're absorbing the cost of the additional work that's required for all the ones that fail to require additional work and pass.
The ones that fail will still pay a fee, but the fee is not an operating permit fee. They're gonna pay a two hundred and eighty-dollar compliance agreement fee. The compliance agreement ensures that they are going to get their septic system repaired, repaired.
But the city needs to do more work to ultimately get them to, to, to charge the five sixty or whatever these permit, than it requires to give the person who, who had a working system paid to have it inspected and told the city if they have to pass.
I see what you're saying. Yes, we would then do the same process and on top of that, issue a compliance agreement.
So can we charge different amounts? Can we, could, could we legitimately lower the fee dramatically for anyone who passes and increase the fee proportionally for those who don't?
So that's why we bring in all of the scenarios of council. This is what is proposed. If the council decide that you want to subsidize this item or you want to lower it, that's what, that's what we're here for.
That, that wouldn't be subsidizing, that's, that's different. We could also subsidize, but this is different subsidizing. I'm talking about actually allocating a higher fee where it actually is costing the city more money because we're not getting into that granularity of these stuff.
Question, some question, can we break it up into tiers?
Well, pass, fail.
Pass, yeah, if something...
Yeah, we could, we could do that.
Yeah, I would think if you pass, it shouldn't cost hardly any, is it?
Hold, hold on a second.
Uh, what typically happens is if your system fails, you're gonna go to the guy who failed your system, go, what's wrong with it? How can I fix it so that you can retest it and it'll, it'll pass? And that's what that whole churning goes on. That happens outside of, of what the city is doing unless they want to replace components of the system, in which case they need to pull permits for that.
Stop what they're saying. They're saying that you initially fail.
The guy, no, you initially fail and the guy who did the septic inspection discovers that your septic tank, for example, has cracked side and it's leaking into the soil. Well, you've got, you're now looking at, at a major permit to replace the tank, maybe with a new system, whatever. But it's gonna take a while to figure out what you're doing. And, you know, then this, this is all about catching the thing that has been broken so before it has a chance to cause damage that hurts the rest of the people around them as well.
That may add on to that as well, that is entirely correct. So this five hundred and sixty fee, as it comes with the review of the inspection report and all the correspondence it's discussed. In the event that the operating permit fails, for example, you need a new septic system or septic tank replacement, you will then submit an application for that and we'll go back to the entitlement phase, the plan check phase and the permit stage and leave the associated fees for that. So it's not that if the operating permit inspection fails, they, we have less work to do with this five hundred and sixty-dollar operating permit fee. We will then, our time will then be allocated to reviewing a project for a new septic system, um, or a septic tank replacement. Does that make sense?
Let me ask you a question. Um, we're talking about all of the complex, uh, sophisticated systems and wide permits. The old style...
Yeah.
They still require operating permits, not as often, every five years? And I think the, the alternatives are every two years?
Yeah, so that's what the portion on the right side, I haven't quite, quite to that yet. So residential, yeah, go ahead.
Now I'm gonna turn myself in. I think old style system, they know when his turn is told.
No, it's possible there may not have been a need to. We have got a trigger to get in this.
Oh, you have to have a trigger, okay. I haven't been triggered, all right.
So Felicia, maybe to clarify what I heard, I apologize for interrupting your ears in this mouth, but if, uh, an applicant has a compliance system that's working fine, we still take a number of hours to review the versions of the system. And that's what the city's covering because it's likely gonna take about four hours whether it's good or bad.
That's right.
No, we have the first owner, I just, that's important.
Okay.
That's important. And that, the reason is that when this was originally passed, the concept of going out and inspecting everybody's systems was too daunting. And so they, they settled on every time a, a house sells, you need an inspection and they, they get entered into this system. So if you, if you've been, there are people who've been in the same house for fifty years, they've never had, they're not in our system yet because they've never had a problem that resulted in them being in the system.
Another reason on that, but, um...
Must we change the law?
Well, the other, the other portion of that is if you have a repair to your system, then you're required to get an order.
Right, exactly.
And more information must be submitted on your, uh, report. Page thirty-six of the report. Uh, the matrix bit explains why the environmental health has the annual recovery of ninety-five percent. We have a deficit of a hundred and two and the reason why those deficits is, uh, operating permit fee, operating fees for residential will be by accounts for the majority of the deficit. So I just want to highlight that for you.
All right, so just had a curiosity, roughly, how many complex systems do we have? How many permits do we have? We've got like eight thousand, I don't know how many residents we have, six, eight thousand or so.
I thought, I thought fifty-seven.
Fifty-nine hundred or something like that.
Yeah, fifty-seven.
Right, so how many, roughly?
I would estimate at least approximately half of them may have an operation. As just a general estimate.
Those have, how many of the complex systems versus the... Roughly?
Maybe about half them. But that's... An, an operating permit is an operating permit, correct? Regardless if it's one of those three categories.
Correct.
So I think I'm still trying to understand, if you have a report that's submitted, somebody's up for their review, you send the letter out, in thirty days, they provide you the report from the certified inspector. You read the report, you process it and you check that, you know, another, um, amount of time can go by until they're required to put it in again. How much time does that take to review that report?
That whole process, not just reviewing the report, but the intake, the reviewing the inspection report, uh, often corresponding with the practitioners, um, in order to get clarification on incomplete reports and corresponding to staff notice, does take approximately four hours.
That's how you did the five sixty.
That's correct. I, I'm having heartburn with that much for a compliant report.
Inspector should be able to enter something on a computer and it automatically...
I mean, I understand that staff does have to do a portion of work and I respect that, but...
I'd recommend, make, make note of it if that's a suggestion of the council. We're happy with...
I mean, my suggestion would be that we look at having, you know, a, a fee for a combined report and then we have another, uh, fee amounts for those that are out of compliance or have a failing and have to get, enter into various requirements.
This is probably one of the most high-profile programs in the city.
Well, almost every resident has a bill, but it, it's something.
And there are only shop, that's the big difference.
Right.
One to the inspector and one to the city to accept the inspection.
Hold, hold on.
I was on the board of Realtors group that met with the planning people to force them to actually issue these permits in a reasonable amount of time because they were all gonna be due as people were in escrow. And as far as the, a system where the, the certified inspector could actually access and enter the data into the city's, uh, thing, it's, it's a huge gaping security problem if you do that because there are people out there doing septic certifications who, or there were in the old days, who wouldn't have been above taking some extra money and falsifying the data.
Then they would submit a false report too.
They would send a false report and we would, and they get caught and then they lose their ability to write reports for the city. They would send a false report and we would, and they get caught and then they lose their ability to write reports for the city. And that's, that's what, it, it ends up costing them a lot more money to lose their certification.
Right, but if someone's, if someone's willing to commit the crime, they're gonna commit it in the written report as much as they're gonna commit it on the computer. This is just a question of technology, it's not a question of, um.
The other problem is if, if, if those guys can get into the system, so can hackers get into.
But, but we have a whole online system that people are able to upload things to.
This is not part of that.
I understand, but it is something that we could add to the uploading of. Just like they're uploading when they submit for a coastal development permit for a new WTS, they have to do all those things. Isn't this something that the system could accommodate where we add that they could put in for uploading their digital report versus a, a paper report?
We'll have to double check on, on the upload and the visual part, but we could absolutely add an additional fee to our schedule and that's the, you know, if you, if you wanna have two tiers, that absolutely.
I think we should have a, a approved and a.
The city deserves that, but I imagine it's not the only type of situation like this in the whole city where someone else is doing the work, submitting a report about what the conclusion was and the city has to spend on them. Reading what was submitted and confirming that it's accurate so that they can then issue a permit?
Well, I mean, that's the whole part, the money part of it, I mean, every part.
It's, it's the one answer for it?
Double check, yeah, sorry.
And, and so just to make sure I understand, you're not reviewing the report to see whether you agree with the conclusions, you're just gonna see if they did or didn't create a red flag. You're just looking through pages and pages and pages and say, they either said yes or they said no. You're not saying whether they properly said yes or properly said no.
That is correct.
That, that would be a bit of a technological.
I don't wanna take too much time, but I would add too, for biologists, this is common, that the biologist, maybe a summary, this biologist, I don't wanna say anything, but this contract biologist is working for a client, right? And so they may word it in a way that benefits their client. Our biologist's job is to review, kind of read between the lines and make sure that she agrees with the analysis and she agrees with the findings.
I get that, that's what I'm understanding, whether this is that kind of situation or not. It sounds like this is not, this is purely objective. Yes or no is checked and the city's just making sure that all the right guesses are checked or the right no's are checked.
Okay, I think we, I think we pretty well have the theme.
You made it to death, let's, let's go.
Yes, let's, let's move on.
Well, the, the staff needed direction and we would like to have.
We, we have noted it, uh, and with that, we will pass it into our interim, uh, planning director.
Need, need just to wait.
Get something, get something.
And now for something completely different.
Oh, good.
Um, first of all, I want to, um, thank Yolanda for clarifying how she does her permits. Every building permit is a little different. Uh, your, the way you count units here is different than other. Some others, it's go by valuation, there's like shoes, it's more consistent actually, and I love that. The other way is, you're always being given a crappy valuation to keep the permit price down, so it's good way to go. Anyway, uh, plant analysis, um, uh, we are the department that is your problem relative to the amounts we collect and work we have spent through all of these uh detailed analysis that you see in the issues that face us. Uh, the question is, how do you tackle it? So, um, I started by pretending I was in your seat in your shoes to say, what could I look at? How would I tackle this? So matrix to look at thirty company fees. They gave us information about the volume, how many of what come in, they do. They compared the current fee against what our actual cost was to perform the work. They even compared that fee to the collection in other cities. So if we're uniquely high or uniquely low, why would that be? And then, again, the bad news is that at the end, they keep up with this deficit slightly over a million dollars in terms of revenue collection to the effort issue. So to help maybe make sense for a start, uh, we took another look at the data and we kind of aggregated the data into, uh, two major type of categories. What are the things we do the most of and what are the things that we lose the most on? And then we coupled that with processing challenges. So in the original matrix report, this is taken out of page thirty-eight of their report. It's the list of those thirty fees of current fee is the annual cost. Then the estimated deficit, bad news shows up at the bottom. So, um, on the left side are the top six of what we do. Um, I'll note, I left out short-term rental appropriate coming at the bottom, there were four hundred of those, but that's kind of a one-time, one-off. Um, and then.
I'm on page forty-two of my book.
Two a year.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
That's actually logical one.
Yes.
So what we took most of, because it makes sense to adjust the fee here, we only do two a year or three a year. We wanna take a look at the big ones where changes really have an impact against that loss. Then on the right-hand side, what are at the top six? Why did I pick six? Because there appears to be a drop off after you count to six in terms of, uh, smaller losses. And what I found is that there are only six permits, six permit types on that right-hand side that are really responsible for almost eighty percent of your deficit. So that helped me to hone in. Then I compared and tried to correlate the highest value in top six with the top six highest losses and looked what happened. I came down to three permits.
I was just gonna pause real quick, going back, what I mentioned at the beginning of this, as, and thank you to Maureen, Tyler, Patricia for giving the analysis of this, as we were doing it, it helped us drill into the numbers. We did, those numbers on the Excel backup got transposed on the matrix, so uh it'll be corrected when we come back. It doesn't change our analysis, uh, but some of the numbers in the categories are slightly different, so just wanted to get that. And it lowers the deficit by one thousand or so.
So what are the big three that I think that we should be studied? Uh, first is our other counter permits, we do about three hundred and eighteen of those a year. You saw the analysis, something as simple as just adding that powder room. There's planning fee, but then there are other fees and planning has to follow that project through to completion. Um, so that theme starts to tell you where there's automatic dribble of loss. Do you only have a project that's a few months of division, no harm, no foul? But as these projects get larger and bigger, staff salaries are going up, staff time continues on the project and you're gonna see that trickle down effect.
So say there, yo, why that, why are we losing money? What, what is happening that's causing us to lose money?
Well, a portion of it is time loss. I'm gonna ask you go through these slides. Time, T-I-M-E, sorry for my voice.
Okay, I, um.
So, I just wanted to add.
Activities, more activities than anticipated, more intervention of project than anticipated.
So in addition to what Maureen is saying, back in twenty fifteen, the city council, we did a fee study. And just to give you an idea, for coastal development permits, they adopted a forty-five percent recovery. APRs, twenty-five to seventy-five percent recovery. Uh, the cost event permits again, twenty-five to forty percent. So that started back in twenty.
So we lose money because we underpriced it back then.
We did the total analysis, total cost, and then we adopted a subsidy. So that's how we started getting really money.
Gotcha.
And then on top of that, what Maureen's touching on is now there's multiple appeals, multiple reviews, multiple hearings. And so the amount of time these things, like, is much more.
It's being amplified, yes, but so let, let's go through where your point is. Excellent, I wanna continue to build on.
Just a quick question, I mentioned appeals, because we look at the appeal numbers like sixty-three thousand dollars or so.
Just three appeals.
But we've got others that are in process. So they may not go all the way to an eventual final hearing for the council, but you're spending all this time working on maybe about eleven in process right now?
Um, I think there are six or seven are listed to council and then others.
So all those are, are expensive as well, right? So are you, do we need to separate out the ones that have appeals from this number or is it included in this?
You could tickle, again, adding specific, uh, um, fee types. This would be a lot later than just any city you go to. Um, because most cities, uh, set an appeal rate for their constituents. That's fair, but never to balance out full cost recovery.
Okay.
I haven't seen it, so.
I just wanna know what was it, Scott?
Um, so anyway, over the counter, um, if an extreme deployment, it's about eighty-five of those annually. Um, and that the big coastal development permits, seventy-five a year. But just those three is fifty percent of that revenue loss. So with, um, and seeing where your big loss component is, it comes from these three fees.
And I'm, I'm trying to remember, when we did the strategy session, there was some discussion about projects being sent back to us two, three, four times to get done, okay? Uh, and does, does that also result in some of these losses, the fact that we're doing this work and not getting paid for it?
Uh huh.
We gotta start figuring, I mean, well, okay, uh, the structure, the time, go ahead.
Right, well, that's part of why we're here too. But we'll go to, um, next slide.
So, um, are those loss factors? So we took a look at admin and reviews in twenty twenty-three, we did forty-seven of those. Only eight in the last two years didn't require this interdepartmental review process. So as departments come in, Yolanda's groups come in to take a look at specialty areas during that planning process. That's the whole process involves planning. Because planning has to take a look at their changes to the original scope of work. For example, if they, uh, if there is additional, um, uh, in a, in a yard near an ash and some, that could trigger a different level of reviews, you know, to stay involved.
So there, so there are components that when a plan comes in, we can take a look at and say, potentially this was gonna require a lot more work than what the other one possibly could. So there, there are components of that that we can identify and say, if this, if this plan has this in it, we know it's gonna charge, it's gonna cost us more, so we can figure it with the bump of the fee to cover that and figure it, right?
Well, that they already have because they've broken it out, the APRs, there's how many different levels they have?
I wanna say we have nine levels now.
And we're still losing a hundred and ninety-four dollars in application.
Six, so there's six different APRs and nine different coastal development permit levels.
Right.
To do just that, where they look at, it's anticipated that this type of supplemental is gonna be this type of, um.
We, we can predict in advance, um, when you take a look at the fourth bullet down. We're up to a year of processing time on average for these types of review. In some cases, planning's work is done very quickly upfront. But as other levels of the analysis goes on, that application remains open. That could be some of the issues that you hear as council, when you hear complaints from your redevelopment community. It's not necessarily that planning is done work, for example, the powder room inside the house, that's a new powder room. But it's the other pieces that leave that application open and extend the time.
So say they had to submit to geology and environmental health and geology and environmental health isn't getting the materials that they require in order to approve a project.
Says so, but. And again, that's always a component that we know about, especially Yolanda, you get us at all, it's incomplete.
I think to all the, thank you very, to all of this, you also need to take into account, uh, we are, we are working with the design professionals and sometimes the design professionals will take two months, three months, six months, seven months to even respond to the first time that they submitted a project. So that adds to the, uh, average processing time. It's not solely depending on the, on, on the jurisdiction or of all of our reviews. It also is very timing to their design team, when their design team responds back to us.
Not only with the cost, but that, that also plays into why the residents are so upset that it takes us so long to get to, I mean, it's not necessarily our fault, it's their fault. And we talked about this once before too, you know, that when that happens, we're gonna try and go back to the homeowner and say, we do now, we're starting going back to them, saying, you're, we're waiting, your guy's the one that's holding up the whole train.
They may not agree with us though.
So, so just to give you guys an example on this year, this administrative counter review that takes a year, you know, the first review might take the city forty to sixty days to respond, we might not hear back from them within four months. And so you're talking about half the time, if not more, of that year is actually them getting all the documents they need, the revisions they need, the, the professional materials they need to submit back to us.
Yeah, but I guarantee none of those folks are saying, hey, it's my fault, they're.
Yeah, I don't wanna say it's their fault either, I think the, I think the, I think it's a very complex review. So when we issuing a complete letter, there's a lot of items that we're asking for. And so they have to go back to all their design professionals, it's not just one person. They have a, a geology, geology person, they have a coastal engineering person, they have a, you know, different specialties. And so it takes a lot for them to gather.
I don't just, I mean, but again, I don't hear anybody, I've never heard a resident come back and say, it's taking me two years to get my house built and the reason is because my, my architect couldn't get a doctorate, you know, dropped it.
And about that to the architect.
There, there, they, there are all telling multiple stories that are being told and often the people they hire maybe tell me.
I, I hear the stories, I'm just saying, dude, I'm not hearing any story that says it's on their side that the way is. And that's why we're getting all this bad press in the city, I mean, we're.
And also to take into account, uh, many of the projects that come in on the first submitted, the owner might not like the layout that they are, that the architect is proposing. So on the second submitted, we might get a different layout, a different, yeah, so it will, so now we will go with the same amount, but going back to the application.
You know, these architects are getting a half a million bucks to do these projects and we're getting, we're getting beat up. I'm, I'm sorry, another.
Uh, that, that's a huge factor and, and, and I would say, but fifty percent of all cases, that, that component, if you drill down.
Yeah, I just.
Hold on a second, question.
It's, it's more of a comment, the, we have a, we have a multifaceted problem here. When we lost four hundred and seventy-eight houses, every architect, they claimed to know anything about building in Malibu, immediately had a lot more work than they could handle. And a lot of them just took as much work as they could. And they're very enthusiastic when they're making their first submission to us. And then they get their corrections back. And by that time, they're, they're halfway into the next project or the, the other seven projects they're working on. And it's hard for, I, I don't think any of them have an adequate staff to handle those referrals back to them in a, in a reasonable amount of time. And I think that's one of the reasons that I, I've talked to Yolanda about. We gotta get in the habit of when we tell them they've gotta do X, Y, and Z, we gotta send an email to the owner that says, we met your architect and we told him he's gotta do X, Y, and Z. Because otherwise, we're just too easy to target because we, you know.
I, I think I wanna add to that, this not only impacts planning, it's a whole development process.
Right.
It's not a so loss factor of time for planning. It's in the health, it's building safety, it's probably worse. Every department is impacted by the numbers. In addition, we do have open counters at.
In addition, we do have open counters at Monday through Friday, every day. We don't charge for our applicants to come in and ask questions. Multiple times, we have engineers doing box meeting over the counter for the other building safety. There are contract services, and we are not charging for a specific, or pay us for that, that time. We're only charging for the permit length. So it is a lot to take on when we're talking about fees and tell the whole story of what is the amounts that we are charging for. At the beginning of the, of the, of the presentation, some of you were a little concerned on the, on the amounts that we're charging for, over the counter, for a pattern remodel. You were concerned about the text, so let's bring everything back. And all of these factors are associated with the work and the operations that the city does day in and day out. Your applicants, our community, is not turn our way and say, you know, I'm not going to help you out because we, you know, you're, you're paying your fees. We are helping everybody, and we want to make sure that we give the best customer service and that's what we're here to do. Not only with the person that is doing the review, but also bringing people from the different departments, so we are able to provide the guidance that, that they might require, because they don't know the codes.
I'm not arguing, I think you're doing a hell of a job taking care of the customers, I don't think they appreciate what you're doing. And I, 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 look, I mean, I'm surprised you guys are selling, you know, defending yourself by posting some of our stuff in some of these meetings, saying, here are the number of contracts, projects we've signed off on, that we've been waiting eight months to get some response to, and that's, people don't know that. And just, you know, they just think you guys are sitting on your hands, you know, drinking Coke, I don't know that, so.
All right, let's move on, because I want to, I'm particularly interested in pulling number five, but I'll also say, it's always hard to tell somebody the kids are up there, and that's what you're doing. You have to tell them their plans or whatever is affecting their budget.
Companies are always cuter.
Now, now, number five just came in today, and it's a, a, a comment letter that came in on a project that's going to the Planning Commission, in which a staffer really questioned the use of the settlement plan review to do a much more complicated review process of coastal development permit. That scares us, that scares us. Everything is being pushed by the Coastal Commission to more process, more bureaucracy, higher levels of review. That's not good, so we're going to have to handle this with kid gloves to try and make sense of why, certainly after all these years, those, those questions.
Was that a letter that has authority, or is this just a comment?
It's a comment.
It's a comment.
But they're, they're, they're making, they're advising us to interpret our code their way.
Said Steve Hudson or somebody else?
It's staff.
It's new staff.
Yeah, they got, they got, we got a new coastal analyst. I don't want to get into too much, I'll take out.
But they're just questioning the use of the CDP.
The use of the CDP is, I'm sure you're correct.
Right.
Yeah, there's an APR that's on the next planning mission, and they're questioning our use of, why doesn't it require a CDP?
So. Um, over the counter, that's obviously the thing we do most of the time. It should be a thirty-day process, but unfortunately, sixty percent of these type of work we're seeing within this broader range of theory, require that interdepartmental review. And as a result, only thirty-five of that's, thirty-five percent of that sixty got it within our goal of a thirty-day period. There could be improvement there to try and work with other departments to see if we can effectively move things into faster into a building permit stage. And result, if you said that, and vote will see, but it's certainly a right area to take a look at. Next slide.
Could we get a copy of that letter? It's, it's, we'll, we'll publish it as public comment, yeah, again.
So now the big mother of all permits, coastal development permits. One of the big things that you've heard repeated, is people don't give us complete submittals. So you're constantly reviewing and reviewing and submitting and, 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 and. There's this increased interdepartmental activity that occurs with these. And let's not forget, LA County Fire, they're the eight-hundred-pound gorilla in the river. Everything, the inches around there, access, turn around, brush clearance, issues like this. And let's face it, they, they move like a sloth. They're not terribly fast in their review process.
It's not a sexy job, they don't like it.
Right. So we, when we set this, we, you, when you set this up, estimated two public hearings to process these. But unfortunately, we're in a three to nine hearing range. And we picked an example, which was a appeal that you heard back in late August. Staff basically had this for about twenty months, but you're tied to a decision with seventeen months, ten public hearings, then the appeal, we didn't even count in the appeal process in this. But that time loss, think about this. A planning, a, a, a senior planner, whoever, has to write a staff report, show up at that meeting, be prepared to address questions or update a report. Staff needs to put up notices, green notice in some cases. It's a labor-intensive process for which there is not cost recovery.
Why do we have eight hearings? Why do we have eight hearings?
This was the Zumeris project.
So why, there, there's got to be a reason, went through eight different, I mean, you would think of it.
And multiple planning commission, because there wasn't satisfaction to make a decision. And then there was the, the whole, we didn't know, you know, legal whose realm it was. So went to council, went back to planning commission, then appealed, back to council, so, yeah.
And, and this is not counting, Mary mentioned the planning, senior planner completing the report, but all the, all the support that goes along with it, strategically, structurally, public works, we all get involved by providing feedback background and getting prepared for a meeting. So it, it, it is, it is, it is a whole group of people around this type of projects.
Paul, have we broken out how much money we take in for appeals on this? Because if we just look at every coastal development permit, we can plan on losing four thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and nineteen cents on average. And I think that a great deal of most of that is because there's a few things that get appealed. And the appeal charge we have is seven hundred and fifty dollars, and we spend sixteen thousand dollars of staff time to, to get ready for that appeal hearing, is that correct? About, I think.
I have a suggestion.
I'd love to hear it.
I, I wrote this down for me, I, I would like to see us build in the maximum cost of an appeal into a CDP application, at least if it's an ethical project, over a certain threshold, and then provide for rebate in that component of spending. But that way, the applicant bears the actual, the actual cost of getting their project from beginning to end.
If you could have a fight. File a bunch of appeals, just because they want to file a bunch of appeals and lose every one?
They're only paying seven hundred and fifty dollars to cause that appeal to be filed anyway, obviously. It, it, it is a cost, a cost to the city of getting somebody's CDP from the conclusion to be able to have to go through the appeal. And I think that we build into the project cost from the start, permit costs, and there's, again, there's a rebate for the actual reduction from what we charged to what they actually cost us at the end of the day, if we don't have to go through the appeal, or if the appeal ends up being less complicated. That would guarantee us a recovery, and it would put the cost on the party that's putting forward the complex project.
Mary?
Well, I mean, to just take this one for example, on Timmeras, that, I mean, with, one, it had, it came to city council, well, that says once or twice, but we actually had hearings twice. So saying that they should have paid, the homeowner should have put up the twenty-eight thousand dollars for the appeal? And then if they're, since they were approved by the council, they get that money back? Or, I mean, how would that even function? And if somebody's, yeah.
You, you, you could provide for a refund, either if it ends up costing less, or if they end up prevailing on an appeal that's brought not by them, but by someone else.
I got a better idea. I'm going to let people appeal things for free, but if they lose the appeal, they have to pay all the city's costs.
Some cities do that, some cities set up a appeal amount, and then if the appeal is paid in favor of the appellant, they repay council, it's that bad. There's all kinds of ways you can cover this.
My, my question, I'll make a, a comment about this. It's not like it's a yes or no. Sometimes you don't have a clear cut with, or a clear cut deny. And it's hard to decide who prevailed or who didn't. So this is, and this is also one of the cases, when you think about the court cases, the court system will never be profitable. People, every time you take something to court, in a lawsuit, the courtroom recovers all their expense, the people that are involved in it recover all their expense. You try to get the sense of substance first.
If you appear before the same judge enough times with these kind of claims, you get determined to be a vexatious litigant. And at that, from that point on, it costs an awful lot of money if you want to file another appeal. And that's, that's the way the actual court system works.
It's not easy to get those if you got one points.
Yeah, I had a client who got one.
Well, I, I don't know if we're going to be able to solve the appeal process out here. And I did want to point out one thing that Bruce and I talked about a couple of years ago. If we don't have a, a charge at the city level, then you can't automatically go to the coastal division. On the other hand, that just encourages, the appeal doesn't cost nothing to throw one on the table. It, it has its pluses and disadvantages. I do, by the way, before we do this, let's remind ourselves, put a pen in the idea that government agencies do not have appeal charges, so.
Well, look, just for the record, and maybe there's no appetite on the city council to it, but I'm actually proposing that we ought to build in the full freight into the CDP to the city and provide for a refund in the event that no appeal is taken. And also, we can adjust that if it's a small project. But I, I think that the mega projects, which are the ones that more often than not cause the appeals, and which more often than not cause the complex appeals, that ought to be a, one of your costs of getting your mega project done is that you're going to have to bear that expense.
We're not talking about a mega project, we're talking about a single-family home.
This is a particular example that may be the anomaly, but for the most part, the ones that cause the most complication are the largest projects, the most complicated and largest projects.
You gotta go back and take a look at what's causing, why, why are we getting all these appeals? Okay, and take a look at that motel. That motel should have never gotten anyplace. And that's why it got appealed, I mean, it was a mess, it was, it was a mess. And so it, it goes back, you know, and, and I think it was Dennis Smith, Paul's appointee to the, to the planning commission, who said, look, he would like to see the city's planning department be more willing to tell a customer, no, can't do that, it's a bad thing, okay? Or if you do it, what we're going to do is object to it when it gets wherever the hell it's going, okay? To get these guys to stop doing these stupid things because people appeal us. I mean, right, I mean, you get another motel project with the same ideas, when you get a field again.
Right, well, I'm not, I'm not raising any qualitative or subjective issues in terms of who's doing what. I'm just saying that if we're looking to recover the cost and the appeals are one of the places where we're losing the most, where we're losing the substantial amount of money, one way to deal with that is to build it into the cost of the CDP. And again, as I said, provide for a rebate in the event that the appeal doesn't occur, or the appeal doesn't require as much work as moment of thought. Just figure out the maximum from the start, that way you're going to get it if it turns out to be the worst-case scenario, and then provide for all kinds of ways to ratchet it back.
All right, well, let's ask a question, how many CDPs do we have, it's about three hundred and?
Coastal development permits.
Seventy-five.
Analyzed.
Seven. How many open CDPs have they ever been approved of?
I don't know, but I think a better metric would be how many have been approved in the last two years. And that's about ninety-five. And thirty percent of those require like four to nine hearings, and not all of those got appealed.
Right. So that's the question I was going to ask, is how many times are there concerns by either a neighbor or a concerned resident that are causing additional timings and.
The majority, the majority. And when we say four to nine hearings, we're not talking about, oh, we actually held a hearing, but we get so close to the planning commission packet, but nobody's willing to pull the trigger and release that staff report because there's something controversial, so then it's pulled. But we count that as a hearing, because the planner has already, you know, prepared everything.
Works continues, works, it's noticed, it's ready to go, it's continued, because the other items in front of it were complicated, and we didn't get to the agenda that night. And so those get pushed, and then it's a virtual. There, there's always an exception to every rule, but let me, leaving out.
But that's become a rule, it's not.
No, I said, but lea- leaving out the, leaving out the oddities, is there a typical size or complexity of a project that is more likely to give rise to the multiple hearings as opposed to one which is not?
I think we can agree with the discretionary requests, variances, site plan reviews, the, the views for a tenant.
I think at the end of the day, we all know this is Malibu, right? And land is very expensive. And so the people that can afford to build a Malibu have the money to try to maximize their potential. And so we don't typically see small projects, we see large projects. So you, so you could not, the kind of thing I'm proposing, you could not have that where it's a clean-cheap project, you could only have it where a variance, where some other discretionary request is made. Again, you're the master of your project, if you want to ask for variances, why not have to pay the full freight if possible, how costly is going to get the get them?
But there should definitely be a variance in a site plan, before line modification.
Have different percentages of what our probable, of our maximum costs are, depending on which type of thing it is? You don't have to have one size fits all.
And I think Tyler, Tyler's hit it right, and this has been talked about, I think, in prior meetings. You're right, people got a ton of money. And so they come in and say, I'm going, I'm going to squeeze or push this thing as far as I can push it, and see what the hell happens, because if I lose, I got the money to do it over again.
And they're not going to care about paying an extra hundred thousand dollars.
Right, I mean, it's a change to that.
To your point, we do, we try to combat them as much as possible, that's why there's seven, eight, nine reviews, you know? At some point, they, they are allowed to move forward with their discretionary requests. And so there's, there's a point where we take them through.
But I, I mean, again, this, this, this comment that says, learn to tell them no, or if they don't, they don't take the no, just say in the staff report, you're going to get a, an approval. I've talked to architects, okay, and I got an architect who, who brags about the fact, he says, I go in and I ask for a variance, and they tell me no, so I ask them again, and they still tell me no. If I ask them enough times, I'll get my variance. So just, I'm just saying, that's the perspective on the outside of it.
Well, also, let's keep in mind, you would say there's only nine projects, maybe, that have gone through the, the, the series. That hardly constitutes data banks to make, you know, decisions about this decision, this and that. I think we have a bigger problem here than just, you know, a few dollars over the rules, I appreciate the approach, but I think we have structural problems that's not going to be solved by a public. And when we talk about who's going to, ready to move to fighting issue, and it's whole, there's a structural issue that needs to be addressed, it's not going to be solved by a public task, by a public.
What's the structural issue you're talking about?
It's not a penalty, the, the way I'm approaching it globally is, I'm thinking to myself, again, because these are all. It's not a penalty. The, the way I'm approaching it globally is I'm thinking to myself, again, because these are all averages, I think what's really happening is the complex projects, which are the ones where people can afford to pay the most actually, are paying less than their actual fair share of the actual cost because we averaged in the non-complex projects to get an average fee. The easy projects, which actually are the ones where the people have the most difficulty paying the, on the margins, are paying more than they, than they should actually cost because they're being averaged in with the complex ones. I, and I, to me, those are the people I care about most, people who are doing, the, the average person that lives here, not the person that was second now, is building a giant building. If you maximized out the prices at the top so that every fee in the first instance is what the actual most expensive fee could possibly cost, and then have a series of discounts that people can certify their total means of, based on what the project actually costs in total, based on the size of the project, based on all kinds of factors that would actually influence what it would really cost to do the work. You'd recover your costs for the expensive ones, which would actually be a higher cost than we're even being proposed to charge because it would take into account the delta that we're missing because we're averaging. And it would favor the people that are doing the smaller things and give them an incentive when they're not wealthy residents to do the smaller project because they would actually get a more significant discount from the fee. And I think that's the way we ought to be approaching it.
For point of clarification, doesn't change your, your logic, but Matrix specifically took out the outliers on either side, extremely simple projects or extremely complex.
I, but there's still a lot of the complex ones.
Yeah, yeah, there's still, it's still a lot. It's an art of science. They tried, they tried to peg a fee.
And, and that's, that's the way I've been approaching my thought about this, and I would wanna see all of our fees done that way. I, I don't think that, and I, and also, it doesn't bother me to lose some money to get it right for the people of the low end as opposed to making sure we get every dollar.
I, I just wanna make a comment back to Steve he has about the structure. Anything that causes eight additional public hearings is a structural problem to me.
Right, I'm starting to figure what that is.
Yeah, I, I don't know where to solve it today.
Well, if I can define the problem, I got a shot at fixing it. Right now, I'm having a problem, get, make sure I get a good definition.
And going back to Tyler's comment about, or Pat's comment about, we get close, and then hold back, that's a structural issue to me.
Right, I agree.
I think that's where we're giving a lot of expense. And we look at the ZUMRES project, if the average, if the cost is sixteen thousand dollars for the appeal, I'll tell you, ZUMRES is probably two hundred thousand dollars, just because it's, it's gone through the grinder so much. I don't think we're able to solve this today on this part, but I do think, we're gonna have to, and I, and where I'm gonna ask that we consider this, and Bruce is proposing, in our plan, strategic planning coming up next cycle, I think we might wanna look at this as a cost of project as to how we fix the structural issues. And we're not gonna solve it by, you know, program due this afternoon, but it might be better to have a thoughtful inquiry into it.
I mean, I think, to me, this is, look, the complaints we get are this, right? I mean, if you, if you could elix, eliminate these things, or at least minimize, I'm not, I'm not grief we hear about this stuff, all of a sudden, the city's working like a charm.
Mary Ann, you had a question?
Well, no, I had a comment. So, on the coastal development permit, right now, we've got level four, we've got a new single-family residence or a remodeled non-conform structure. And that's probably, well, that obviously, that's every new column falls into that. So, maybe we add another level in there where it, it is, if you're proposing fifty percent of the allowable square footage is a lower fee?
This is on page ninety-two of the packet?
Uh, thirty-nine.
Coastal development permits?
Uh, yeah, you could go there, or it's not in the staff report, or, you know, in the, uh...
Thirty-five of the report, of the matrix report, or thirty-nine of the packet.
Thank you.
So, I mean, I think that we can all agree that, or maybe I'm just saying, that if we have an incentive to build smaller homes, I think there's a consensus of, that we would like to encourage that. So, maybe we can try something like that where we have a fee that encourages a smaller proposal on the initial submittal to, to set up some type of an encouragement thing.
Right, and what I'm suggesting on the other end is, we, we really ought to shoot to get maximum recovery on the complex projects because those people could care less whether they're spending a hundred or two hundred thousand dollars on a project.
I think you're comfortable with having a very high, and if you are going for, you know, a hundred percent of development allowable square footage, then, yeah, you're gonna pay a higher fee. But if we have something that maybe does propose where somebody could be encouraged by the review of the lower amount and everything else, it's just keeping that, that they're not pushing the envelope on that, that it actually stays, that covers that particular encouragement.
Yeah, and I think, I think we're on to something here, we're not gonna solve it seven minutes without pushing forward, that there is a correlation between some aspects and the complexity in appealing at all, whether it's EBSA, or it's square footage, or whatever. And we just, I think that's where, when we go back for the work plan, that might be the thing to look for and...
I just wanna recommend, I mean, you, you guys have forgotten more about this planning process than we're ever gonna know. I mean, you do this on a day-to-day basis, and I'll go back to Paul, to Doug's structural thing. I, I mean, look, if I'm a planner and I have to do the same goddamn project nine times to get it out the door, I'm out of here. Right? I'm gonna go find something where, where I'm actually getting some benefit out of the job. If, you know, if we're making people go through nine miles of barbed wire and broken glass, I don't wanna work here.
Because I have a public hearing.
Give me, you know, give me some place where I can actually learn something, I'm doing something different, I'm keeping myself, I'm, you know, I'm getting better at it. So, this structural thing, I think is, so, you guys gotta think about it. I mean, you're gonna come up with the solutions much quicker than we are to think about it, because I think if we can fix that, we get a whole bunch of benefits from the city, and I think that's what we're looking for.
I, I just wanna clarify something there. We do have some answers. We had a study of the Baker's Report. There are a lot of things that we're doing address. Some of it has to do with confusion of our codes, some of it has to do with how the different commissions.
I, I understand, and I read Baker's.
Let me finish one. Staff are always gonna continue to work, and we are working on processing it. But I wanna be clear, what we're saying is the definition of structural problems. Because there's a point where staff do say no to applicants, and there's this misnomer out there that staff can just blatantly say no to an applicant. The applicant has property rights. Staff work, and the point of us saying seven to a dozen times, they go back to a review is because we have told them no, and they're trying to get their project compliant. But now it comes to the policy board, that being commission, that being the councils. When there is pushback at that level, saying, "We don't like this project," that's fine, but that's, the applicant has the right to do that.
I'm not, okay, I hear what you're saying, but you're doing the same old, it's the same stuff we've heard before.
We can't keep throwing staff under the bus. In one breath, we say we, we have to defend ourselves, and then in the other breath, we say, "Oh, staff need to fix it." So, let's be clear, staff are doing everything they can as a subject matter expert and are providing the best possible customer service.
Okay, and I hear you, we've had this argument before, and let me, let's go back to this motel. All right, no, no, hey, no, no, wait a minute, I just, he, he, I, I, I'm in favor of making the staff's job easier, all right? And we need good people in here, and we need to have an environment that allows them to, to learn, to grow, to do better stuff, okay? Nobody told the guys who were building a motel, no.
Yes, they did.
No, they didn't, because when it came to us, it was approved by the staff.
All right, all right, this is, this, I'm gonna call a timeout there.
Go ahead.
All right, let's, we're not gonna solve that right here. I'm gonna make a recommendation on the ceiling, just listen, and I don't need to, I don't know where you're headed, but let me see if I can put a pinch line. I, I'd like to see this, the appeal amount is seven fifty, and let's see if I can get a consensus, seven fifty and zero fees for government. With the idea being, the work plan would have come back and looked at how to structure this better. If it's recommendations from the staff, or get your basic facilities items, you see if you can carve out for the door twice. And they need themselves protected, and they need legal, and let's find out what they are. If I can get a consensus.
I got a problem, yeah.
I've got no problem, and this would incorporate Bruce's comments, so, but we'll never solve it, but Paul.
I, I'm, having, having, telling a multimillionaire that they, that they only have to pay seven hundred and fifty dollars to, to appeal their neighbor's project makes no sense to me. Okay? They're gonna hire an attorney who works for seven fifty an hour and do it. It's not, it's not even a speed bump.
That's exactly why it should be not a speed bump, because you can make fifty thousand dollars and the person that's got unlimited money is still going to be a jerk and stop the neighbor from doing it.
Right.
But the people we need to be protecting are the average, non-giant, not, not uber-wolfy resident who might have legitimate rights and who is gonna be close prohibited from taking their position to the next level. And I agree that we shouldn't increase the fee for that reason, but I think it's wrong to just push it forward to a work plan. I think it could be built into the permit thing, and then, and recovered fully. And then again, and it's a rebate in the event that the, there's no appeal, or the appeal, even if the appeal's successful, maybe it's just rebated.
All right, all right.
I would just say the suggestion, we send this back to A and F to have you guys go through a more granular...
We could, A and F's already had this, and I think what we wanna do is, and Bruce, I, I hear your comment, but the only way we're gonna solve this is to have a consensus building, work plan, kind of a outcome of this, where we really didn't hear what evolved parts of it. And we had this in place now for years. Remember to solve it, you're gonna be back in the work plan, uh, in what, six months?
Yeah, but Doug, it, it was at A and F initially, just on the, let's figure out whether this analysis was done properly, the cost accounting type of analysis. Now, we've got, we may, we may get guidance from the full council, which we didn't want to presume one way or the other until we put it before the council. I wouldn't have a problem going back to A and F if we have guidance and taking a sharper pencil and trying to figure out what the, what the, what the policy decision should be now that we're getting guidance. I wasn't comfortable doing it without any input.
We're gonna turn our light to sleep here.
It's my last slide, Mr. Earl.
So, I support, I support Mary Ann's suggestion.
All right, Liz, why don't we hear what your part is, and we'll come back.
It's my last slide, you don't have to do this.
So, it'll be seven more appointments, so you gotta watch this.
So, our observation is that if you focus on the top six, yeah, the appeal field, and that's a separate issue, that's merited focus to really hone in on. And two things to hone in on. First of all is, is there something that we can streamline in that process? Is there some place where we can do a concurrent review process so that something doesn't come in once to check on this and through the plencher to check on it again? That might be a piece that could be part of a study that the student department's undertaking. Number two, you talked about the appeal bodies. I, I, we need your help to get these projects through a time plane. It's, it's highly unusual to find situations that are causing this kind of bluster with these projects, so we need your help there. But there may be cases at which it is appropriate for staff to get additional fees for services rendered. I would tell you that in my experience, planning departments, I know you don't like the term subsidy, but let's just use it for the time being. Planning departments, all this, have subsidy, we always run it at a deficit. That's because some councils feel badly that they're, have a complex process and people have to go through the wringer on it. So, they drop the fees for residents, and then they pile it on for businesses and outside interests. You can take a lot of philosophical approaches to why you would submit the fee. But in my experience, somewhere between twenty-five percent and fifty percent of your planning staff is coming out of the general plan coverage period. That's, that's about where you wanna get to. Right now, you're at a hundred percent. That's much higher than, I would recommend that you should be. So, if you can find a, a way to put that cost loss at about a, through the five hundred thousand dollar range, you'd be more in line with what other cities experience.
Hey, let's see if we can get a consensus here.
Well, I do have one more comment. On the, the recent middle plans, the plan review, so we've got prior planning performance and approval and after planning performance and approval, how are those being implemented? Once they have their third, second or third review, are we applying these fees?
Yes.
Okay, so in addition to the base amount that they're planning, if there are additional, then they do have these fees also added to those.
Yes, and one thing we can discuss or consider is, the CDP pays for three reviews. Do we, if they're gonna do full, full cost recovery, do we allow four reviews? It's also a policy, right? Do we stop applications at three reviews? But today, we implement this, because we have a one-stop seminal administrator, we're capturing all of these fees now.
Okay.
When, when we are the ones affected, so if our mental health has a scenario where they're looking at three or four, five middles, then they're the ones to apply the fee to cover those additional.
I just wanna make sure planning was actually implementing this also.
When, when it's, when it's ours, yes.
And regardless, we are trying to do everything we can to streamline and find better efficiency. I mean, that's what we've been talking about, about, you know, the recommendations from the Baker's Report, and every Baker's Report and everything else we've been trying to do with technology and trying to work together to do that. So, we're gonna do that regardless, which may improve some of the...
In addition, just for clarification, we do have a process where concurs middle is happening. So, that is currently a practice of the city. We are finding other ways to streamline it and being, uh, being, uh, taking the Baker Tally as a basis because they already did the, uh, the investigation. So, we are looking into other alternatives to streamline the process.
All right, if I could try, we've got more, more people to talk about here, if I could, because Kirsten's not sitting here just because she wants to stay on time. Gotta come in for a debate.
What time do you wanna wrap this, or pass? I think we're gonna go at three.
Yeah, well, we did.
We didn't say what day.
Well, do we wanna break this up? I mean, in an, in approved certain fees, put other fees off? Or are we looking to approve this entire thing, or not approve any of it? And how do you think about it?
I can give a suggestion to you, right now, so far, we're focused on planning and building things. And I've, I've written on this here about what we wanted to, perhaps, change this group right now. One is, Assembly Bill twenty-one sixty, that our government agencies have no charges for appeals. And that also prevents, uh, people, you wanna see that, your owners, my business, city council, you know, it's very close, you'd like to see that.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna bring that back to council as a resolution.
Regardless.
And we also have seven complaints, the idea being the permit fee for, uh, we call it the easy to prove, and what price for the complex permit is the right price. And I'm not sure what the price.
Well, no, and, well, the way I interpreted was that if it's a certified, yeah, pass or fail.
Compliant or failing, right, compliant versus...
I think if we do alternative versus conventional, then it gets confused with whether it's a, which level.
Yeah, we're looking for what we can advise the staff, and see if this is a good advice back to you. And then the third thing on the appeals, I'm gonna suggest we leave it against this kind of view. Send, we have very consideration, we've also put on work plan, you know, this point of placeholder for work plan, talk about how to improve structural and pricing. And that would be, I think, for, up to how large, we, we're...
Somewhere around that, yes.
So, it's not that far away, you're discussing, I mean, that's all I have on my notes for this, and otherwise, the, the mining, it's more than safe to be prudent.
Yeah, I mean, this structural thing, you, if I hit my druthers, that to me is the biggest fix that we can give the city, to give the city. And I, I don't know how much effort we gotta put into that before it, that's... And I don't know how much effort we gotta put into that, but boy, that to me is number one.
And finally, I go back to my place in the first language area of prices. If you ask the people to do the work, they say, "I'm doing more efficient."
So, we have some ideas.
Yeah, I...
Right, right. So, I'm not in agreement with, I mean, that's very few things that we're doing anything with. Um, I came in here with the approach that I'd like to see, again, I, I think the average fee that we've been given through the study, I guess we're stuck with the study for now, but I, I think the average numbers are lower than they ought to be for complex projects and higher than they ought to be for non-complex projects. That's as a matter of cost account. Separate from that, though, from a subjective standpoint, or a follow-up data standpoint, I am fine with the city subsidizing to some extent the less complex projects, which we should be encouraging in any event, but, and, and we've done by people who have less money than the people who are doing the complex projects. So, I would wanna see, if, if we just use this maximum fee that is being presented, put the maximum fee across the board, but provide for an ability to certify a cost of project or, and, and, and maybe even have some, um, complexity analysis that's built into a schedule that says if you fall below a certain threshold, you get a rebate on the maximum fee that we're allowed to charge, so that we're recovering it where it ought to be recovered, and we're giving a subsidy or a rebate to our residents who are providing less work to the staff, and in any event, doing the kinds of things that we wanna encourage them to be doing, which is maintenance and small projects.
First, I, I would agree with you on that, except one thing, if you're a small homeowner, and you're talking about the soft costs of, earlier, this is a lot of money to come up with front-end and get rebate for later. Uh, first, it's...
Well, the only other, well, the other option would be to just discount the fee in, in the first place, which I didn't think others would have an appetite for.
Well, we could discount it, and that also is, is part of the finances, perhaps. But what I'm thinking about is, you know, the kind of...
I'd favor that too, but I think that's gonna be too complex for the city to administer.
Well, this is where maybe we gotta bring this back to A and F, I feel like there's some here. And, uh, I think it would be good to get some ideas from the staff, and, 'cause they say it. What I'm also concerned about is, there are only ninety projects of, of, of multiple departments. Uh, we're talking about something for coastal, it's, it's complex. Let's be careful about what we, what we benchmarking today, and let's see if we can't, get some good input, and come back with recommendations.
So, what are we gonna do, improve the, the, the increased fees across the board?
I would suggest that we, we adopt what we have here, and remember, in A and F, when we talked in matrix, they were pretty adamant that these were the costs, the recommended fees. We'd like the experts to give us a pretty good set of numbers.
No, they're not the recommended fees, they're the costs. It's supposed to decide what the proper fee should be.
I think when, when you look at the study, it says recommended fees. Uh, recommended fee type, you know...
It is, uh, it was a recommendation based on the cost. Uh, it is ultimately a policy decision of, of the council, we're gonna do it. And they said that, uh, other agencies historically, it, it, it can be a policy decision of where do you want to have recovery for certain areas. They showed some other stations typically, you know, like the sixty percent recovery area, it's eighty percent.
We're pretty...
But we are doing well on the...
We asked a lot of questions of the consultant at A and F, and it was very clear that whatever choice of words they would have used in writing, they were not making a recommendation. They were telling us that the maximum amount is that we can charge by the law. And it was then for us to decide how much of that we wanted to charge.
I have to say, uh, okay, if we have others who weren't doing it, I think after thirty, after two and a half hours, probably we'll say that, break, break everybody up, uh, and let's come back when we have other, uh, markets, because this...
No, the guy, the guides was really focused on these areas at the workshop, uh, so I wanna give you those scenarios. And to reiterate, this is, this isn't workshop, so we would have to take it back to council and give you the parameters. Again, we're currently working with a fee schedule that was adopted, that was the static fee schedule from the prior year. Uh, so there's a policy discussion there, whether, you know, what your timing is of this, of this update.
Yeah, before we break, Doug, come on, say this way. If you would favor adopting across the board the higher fee schedule, you're then imposing that maximum fee on everyone, even though they might be entitled to a rebate under my regime. And your reason for saying, "No, let's not go with the rebate," is because they have to incur too much cost upfront to get the rebate. But your approach is make them incur the whole cost, full stop, and they never have an opportunity for the rebate.
We'll come back, I, I approach, we'll come back and address it sooner, in the next year, the next calendar year. But as you look at most of these, there is not big changes, uh, with the exception of, technically, we're talking about, I'm looking at this particular page, um, and, uh, page number, it's in the recommendation of...
For which section?
Uh, by the apartment, this is, uh, level six, ACR from Major Rock. Yeah, the current fee is seven hundred and fifty dollars, the full cost is sixteen thousand.
That's it.
Probably a few, I'm sorry. No, it's...
There, there, there's all, there's, there's increases everywhere, you know, nickel, it all adds up eventually to something substantial.
And it does, it adds something substantial because it's two percent of our budget, it's what the deficit is of time. And we're talking about, you know, million dollar deficit. And if we wanna, if we have something in particular we'd like to cut that, then let's do that. Otherwise, I think we're just gonna keep loading this thing through, uh, unhealiness unless we know what we wanna change. And what do you wanna subsidize?
Well, my, my, my approach is gonna be on the minority, perhaps. My approach could be if we're not gonna take a, um, a sharp pencil to this and, and actually give people the benefit of a lower fee where I think they deserve it, I'm gonna favor not increasing a single fee to make that analysis as opposed to increasing them all and then doing the analysis. I'd rather the city lose the money than the residents.
I'm not sure we're gonna lose doing the macroeconomic, uh, data crunching to come up with what's fair for each individual application to get.
Doesn't matter to me, I'm more concerned about the residents, that they're gonna have to be charged, in my view.
You know, we're gonna make consult, can make consultants who did the work help us work our way, I mean, seems to me that if you get a small group of people, sit down and go through this, you got a better chance of getting a date, recommendation back, and we, and all of us sitting here trying to figure it out in real time, but one man's...
Well, their job, yeah, their job wasn't to give us a recommendation, their job was just to tell us the macro...
But I mean, can they help us do this next step?
Okay, may I say something?
Sure.
All right, so according to the report from the consultant, building safety is recovering ninety-nine percent of the recommended cost recovery. So, I would say that for the building safety fees, we should take their recommendation.
You're paying six, right?
So, move it.
Geology and coastal engineering, environmental health, um, unfortunately, I do have some questions about some of the environmental health fees, but they're at ninety-five percent. Planings, planings at sixty-two percent. I think that's where we have the most analysis that needs to be done with regards to what does the city's policy on cost recovery for planning look like? So, I think that one needs to be tackled again. We haven't gotten into public works, and then to, they're at eighty-five percent cost recovery. Uh, since we haven't touched on it, I would say that that's, that's something we need to revisit as far as that goes. This also, the analysis doesn't come into community services and talking about the recovery fee for our rentals of our buildings, the parking amounts and things like that. And those, I saw some pretty sharp, uh, proposals. And it's my understanding that staff has recommended a different amount on several of those fees. So, I think we need to come back for, um, pretty much everything but the...
The geology?
Geology, coastal engineering, I think they're, they're doing pretty well. But I think, you know, environmental health does count the operating rate. It does have, I've got some questions on the OC level two where they're doing a review, and they're looking to make sure that they're putting in low, low toilets. Well, the building book requires that they have low toilets. So, I'd like to dig in a little bit deeper as to what they're doing for that thousand-dollar review on a bathroom location model, since it's a little excessive.
I guess my, I guess my question I wanna ask the, the council here is how do we move this to conclusion? Are we taking it by pieces, or how do we do it? Because we've now sat here, two and a half hours here, and we've probably put in, the council meetings, and sort of eight hours, and we're still looking at this. How do we, how do we...
You can either, do one of these, you can go to the A and F, you wanna go, and, and, and put your recommendation back to the full council, or you can do it, you know, at a council meeting, put it down there, and just do a briefing, those are the basic options for the council.
Is where, where's that?
I think, I need to go back to A and F, you know...
We're not coming to a conclusion, even on my...
Yeah, the, my suggestion, look, yeah, I got the email from Joe Drummond, the suggestion changes. It's gonna take us a while to go through those. So, my suggestion, send it back to A and F, while you guys take a look at the big picture stuff we're talking about, you know, cost recovery, how we're gonna do that, and then maybe have another one of these sessions, and we go through some of the small details and say, "Don't wanna tweak that or not tweak it." Uh, I think gives us a chance to get through the whole thing without spending the next two months.
All right, well, let me suggest this, 'cause we take Kirsten's time forever. Uh, and anybody else that's got a package here, I think it would be good if we had true recommendations. And if you wanna bring it back to A and F, we'll grind the two there and see if we can come up with, and come back with suggestions. But if we don't do, uh, any changes today, then we adopt what we have today, leave it as is?
We still, we still have to go back to council, we're gonna do a resignation, and there was no action tonight.
There requires a public hearing, we have to, to do it right.
Let's, let's hear what Paul Marion and Steve have to say about the, the other issues that we didn't get to, because otherwise we're flying blind at A and F, and that's the benefit of having this workshop.
Paul, I, I agree that there's no point in further addressing the building fees. Ninety-nine percent is pretty damn good. As far as the environmental health goes, I do not agree that, that we should try to, to discount the... We're, we're keeping a lot of records, we're making, we're doing reporting several times a year to the, to the Water Resources Board and everything else, and I'm, I'm satisfied with that going forward. On the planning department, I've heard that most planning departments typically run it at a deficit of about twenty-five percent. Is that correct?
Minimum.
Minimum.
Twenty-five.
So, we're doing really good, 'cause we're running at a dis, we're, we're doing it at a discount of thirty-eight percent. Now, where, where's the, where's the, if you look at the surrounding twenty cities, where, where are their planning departments?
So, page fifty-eight of the packet, um, in the matrix report, they had that chart, and it shows where we're at. We fall sort of in the middle, uh, wherever the cities have a benchmark. We fall out, we were falling at about sixty-two mark, and you can see that some of them are probably fifty to eighty percent.
That's, that's, uh, uh, page fifty-six, what's this part?
Fifty-eight of the packet.
Matrix page.
Stable packet.
Yeah, you're on it. You're on it.
You're on it. But Ma- Marie, are you saying that sixty-two percent, because of the thirty-eight percent efficiency, is good or not?
I'm saying that a, a subsidy or a deficit, uh, is typically a twenty-five percent contribution, up to fifty, but that would be your range. So, of your million dollars right now, you should seek to cut that off at either half a million or seven hundred and fifty thousand to be...